Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Pittsburgh Planning Board, Tuesday, February twenty eight, twenty twenty three. And if you noticed on our agenda, there's actually a document link there, too. So remotely, folks can look at documents that are in that folder as well, and this one is when we put them up on the screen. Purpose. And our first item of the evening is A and R plans. However, the A and R plan that is in this folder so for one eighty-two and one ninety-six Sheldon Road. The applicants here for that, that is also, that is not for a new A and R, is my understanding, that is just demonstrating that the later subject matter underneath our hearings for the scenic road act for that property is just demonstrating that there's two parcels. So you don't believe there's anything the board needs to take any action on under A and R at this time?
Yep.
The second item under our agenda is minor modifications and site plan approvals for which we have transfer of special permit twenty twenty-one dash twelve zero Beach Street for a sixteen unit multi-family.
Hey.
Tending to that.
Yeah, Herlen, you're gonna have to help me with all Dave King's here.
We have David King.
Okay, David, you're on. I don't know if there's anyone else that that we want to speak, but. Can you hear me? Okay.
I got a notification for some other folks who registered, but I don't see them in the way.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna pull it up, Paula, if you.
Great.
There we go.
So David, we did receive this document for the conveyance for the special permit for this project. It's our understanding that the transfer, this is anticipation of the transfer occurring.
Sorry about that. I'm trying to, nothing's coming up on my screen, other than the screen I see, so. Just bear with me for one second. Are you seeing the transfer authorization, Paula?
Yes.
Okay.
Why is the screen so tiny?
Oh, sorry. That was the wrong button. I'm still working through this guy, so bear with me for one second. All right, and 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 everyone sees that.
Recording in progress.
See it.
All right. I just want to make sure, because like I said, for whatever reason, I'm only seeing the the pins, the the small pins and not the full screen, but that's fine. I have a local on my spin anyway.
Okay, so David.
Hello.
Hello. Oh, yeah, a little echo there. We have this transfer request in front of us.
Correct.
This is in anticipation of the of the transfer or sale.
Correct.
Okay, which has not occurred.
Guys need to turn off your speaker.
Sorry. That is correct.
Okay. Do you have any, can you provide any additional information as to the address I do for the transfer?
Well, the address is Zero Beach Street, because that's what it's called.
No, I meant, I meant the the new owner, the address and principles. You could provide that after.
It's gonna be B sixteen LLC. This is the same developer.
Right. I understand that, but what is the, what is the location of B sixteen LLC? And who is the principal manager?
Okay, so the principals is Mark and Al. They're the same principals for fifty Frankfurt Street and forty-six Frankfurt Street, and they use my office as the base station for their projects, which is fifty-five Mead Street in Leominster.
And who is the principal of LLC? Who's the official manager?
So that would be Mark Klinger.
Okay.
And he's here with me.
Background. All right. So I have just a slight discussion on this. This is part of the special permit is to approve a transfer. If should there be one, and this would also be conditioned upon if there were still does go go forward to then have the transfer recorded in the registry of deeds, so that it's recorded to go along with and follow with the original special permit, so it's documented in there.
Correct.
Yep.
And our offer is conditional upon your approval. So once you approve it, then we're moving forward with the closing.
Okay, and then you could forward to us the the recording.
Correct, yes.
Okay. Great. Does any member have any questions regarding this transfer?
No, I'll make a motion to approve the transfer.
Conditioned on the.
Recording of the transfer document. Yep.
Yep.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second, and we'll take roll call. All those in favor, I guess I say aye, and all those opposed. And Alin's not here, so Alex.
Aye.
Amanda.
Hi.
Tracy.
Aye.
Peter.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
Paula.
Aye.
Paula, just just a kind of a clerical thing. Are you just gonna have community development, or are you just gonna make a note on this transfer authorization of, you know, authorization approved at the plaintiff meeting? Because this, if they record this, it doesn't say anything.
Right, this is not, this is not what would be record, we would actually write.
Oh, you're gonna write off a decision?
Yes.
Okay. A memorandum?
Right.
Yeah. Yep. Okay, that's fine.
So something that a little bit detailed, so that which special permit it goes to with the book and page.
Yep. All right, David, you're all set.
Wonderful. Thank you all very much, and have a great evening.
You too.
Good luck. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. David.
Oh, Holly, I mean, I'm, I'm sorry, Paula.
Yes.
We had a hand raised, and I know that wasn't a public hearing, that's why I wasn't looking, but I don't know if it's something you want to obtain, and I don't know if it was a mistake. It's Joshua Jocelyn.
Okay, Joshua, do you have a, did you have a question regarding that last piece? Again, as Paul mentioned, it's not a hearing, but.
We could. No, I was actually here for the the Sheldon Road A and R. We did submit a new A and R plan. For those lots wanted to.
We'll go, okay, when we get to your hearing, we'll go back to that.
Okay, sounds good.
We can, we can, we'll address that all together when we will open up the documents and then.
Okay.
Okay.
Herlen, if you can find that A and R, Paula, I mentioned that to you last night when we talked, I was pretty sure that was another one.
Yeah, but there's not a new one in the folder.
Yeah, that's, it must have just got confused. I saw it at some point a while back, but anyway.
Let me double check it. I thought I had uploaded it earlier today. The gentleman did email me.
There's one that's already been recorded, but we don't have like a new.
Yep, we can get to that in a minute. We're also gonna need a barn and a paper copy for the city, but.
Yep.
Okay.
All right, the next application in front of us is a minor modification of special permit two oh two two dash thirteen for Alpine Ridge Solar Ray at Zero Alpine Road for clarification of a project completion date, which was condition number twenty-five.
So twenty-five is down here, and I don't think Jamie's here. I didn't ask him to be here. So no, no, I don't see anyone on there. So twenty-five, it says the development to be completed no later than August thirty-first, and twenty-six, the special permit shall lapse if if everything's not done within two years. So the the applicant had, the engineer for the applicant had just said that they were concerned that twenty-five and twenty-six kind of contradict each other, so we just need to make a clerical note that twenty-five basically should be in line with whatever the end date is of twenty-six.
So I, so if you know, back on the first page, it'd be, should be two years past of the date of recording, there's a recorded date with the city clerk.
Yeah.
So two years from October eighteen.
Yep.
Yeah. So October eighteenth of twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, and that's fine. We can, so I'll make a motion to to to, I guess, note the clerical error and revise the special permit to say that special permit condition number twenty-five should say development to be completed no later than October eighteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Great. There's a motion.
Second.
With a second, and we'll take roll call for that. All in favor say aye, if you're opposed, say opposed. Alex.
Aye.
Amanda.
Aye.
Tracy.
Aye.
Peter.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
Paula.
Aye.
All right.
And Paula, that's another one. I'm just curious, because we're handing these a little bit differently now. Are we gonna, are you gonna write a whole new decision with a new number twenty-five? Are you just gonna?
No, it's a modification, so it's just like a one pager that reflect.
Perfect.
What it was to what it the clarification is.
Okay.
So then that can be recorded.
Yep. Yep.
And we are underneath our hearing segment, and I know Alin is not here, but under the scenic road act, we don't need a super majority, we just need a majority.
Okay.
Present for that, and here we go. Now, now we have Josh. So this is the hearing section of our venue this evening, and we're gonna ask some questions to applicants first and some from the board members, and then we'll open up to public for any public comments and any department comments as well. So there's the raise your hand function that you can use if you'd like to speak on the matter, but we're gonna let the developer and applicant speak just about the project first.
Yep, I'm Joshua Jocelyn with Graz Engineering, representing Barclay Enterprises on this. It's actually Jamie Van Dyke and Doug Sepulveda, their business partners here.
Let me know if anyone else, if any, do you want to unmute anyone else if they're here?
I I believe it's just me at this meeting.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, I don't see a video option for you guys to see my face. I don't know why, but um.
If you, if you'd like, I can make you a panelist, and then at that point, you're probably, you can, you can probably show video. Let me.
If it, if it doesn't matter to you, it doesn't matter to me, just.
No, it doesn't particularly matter.
Okay, so basically, we're proposing two houses there, one ninety-six Sheldon Road on the left is gonna have a twelve-foot wide driveway. So about fourteen feet of wall, it's gonna be removed, and we're gonna be adding those boulder returns you see right at the entrance running along the driveway, so the boulders won't be leaving this site. One eighty-two Sheldon Road is slightly thinner, eleven feet with about thirteen feet of wall disturbance. Same thing with the boulder returns there. And you can see the temporary raw wall that's removed now, that was removed to do soil testing on the site right in the middle there, and that's proposed to be rebuilt. So the boulders there are gonna be put back, and there were no trees in the right of way, so we weren't concerned with moving any big trees like on some of the other lots that we developed out here, we had to avoid, so.
And yeah, so just so the public is aware of what we're doing here, and I only say this because I was contacted earlier today by someone who had a question about, you know, runoff in the neighborhood and things like that, which isn't a, isn't a plain book purview anyway with A and R lots, that's either DPW or Concom or someone else, but that being said, the only thing we're we're looking at here statutorily is the cuts into the 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 rock wall and or removal of trees. In this case, there's no removal of trees, so it's just, our approval for the scenic road act, because of the scenic road, they have to get approval to cut into these rock walls, and they're just gonna make returns on the rock walls after they create the driveway.
And I did stake those locations out last week. I don't know if anybody's had the chance to go out and look at them.
No, thank you very much for that.
Yep.
Does board have any, any member of the board member have any questions regarding? So we've got one ninety-six looking for a fourteen-foot opening in the wall, keeping the returns, and then one eighty, number one eighty-two with thirteen feet.
I personally don't see any problem with this, as long as the original stone walls are preserved, and I'm sure they will be, and as as long as the, you know, the boulder returns are done nicely. I believe there's gonna be two great looking homes there, and I'm sure the contractors want everything to look, to look great, so I, I have no problem with the petition.
And 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 is this, Joshua, is this the plan you were talking about?
Yeah, that's correct. We've basically just changed the interior lot line there.
Okay, the the this line here?
Yep, that that is the new line, and that dash line is to be extinguished.
Okay. And this has one sixty-eight plus eleven, so one seventy-nine-ish?
Yeah, that's listed over on the the right-hand side, the lot proposed dimensions there.
Okay, I see him here. Yep, one seventy-nine and one seventy-five. Okay.
And.
They still conform to the district.
It, yeah, we haven't changed the frontages at all, just that interior lot line, because we moved the septics up front, and we added some grading easements. And then we also added stormwater features out back, a detention basin, so we had some drain adjustments there for swells and runoff.
I'm glad you're, I'm glad you're cognizant of some drainage. I guess there's been some issues in the neighborhood there with some of the A and Rs, so I'm glad that, you know, you guys are taking some of the runoff into consideration.
Yep.
Did you drop a, did you drop off a Mylar in a plan for someone in community development?
Yeah, yeah, we did. We, I saw Mike O'Hara there last week, and we left him with, I believe it was three copies of the application and a Mylar plan to be signed.
Perfect. I see Herlen's got it. Excellent. All right, wonderful. Um, I will, we'll start off with the A and R, because that's the easiest. I'll make a motion to authorize someone in community development, Liz or Herlen, to sign the plan.
Second, that motion?
Wait. Yes, you can do that.
I just want to get the A and R.
I decide to stand far.
Yep.
Motion, I'm gonna take roll call. All those in favor say aye, all those opposed, say opposed, and we have Alex.
Aye.
Amanda.
Aye.
Tracy.
Aye.
Peter.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
Paula. Aye. Okay, we are in a hearing. So are there any department comments regarding this? Do we not?
Yeah, so I see this DPW comment. If approved by the plane boy app, it should apply for a curb cut driveway permit from engineering and shall comply with all relevant permit requirements, and that's it.
Okay. Department comment we have. Now, is there anybody, and this, as this is a hearing, is there any comment from the public regarding this application before us? You can use your, the raise your hand function on the platform, Zoom.
I I have no hands raised, Paul.
Okay. All right. This only require, it does require just a majority vote under the scenic road act for this. We have stone walls of fourteen feet for property one ninety-six and thirteen feet for one eighty-two stone wall to work, to be kept on site, be used as the returns around the driveway, and to rebuild the stone, missing stone wall in the center. And pretty much that's it.
Yep, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay.
Motion's been made to close the hearing with a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed? Okay, any discussion?
Uh, no, I I'll make a motion that just echoes the conditions you just mentioned, using the returns driveway widths, and that's.
Okay. Second. That's motion's been made with the second, and roll call vote. All those in favor say aye, all those opposed? Say opposed, we have Alex.
Aye.
Amanda. Amanda.
Whoops.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, Tracy.
Aye.
Peter.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
Paula.
Aye.
Thank you, Joshua.
Thank you.
You.
Paul, somebody does have their hands raised.
Oh, Paula, we have a hand raised, Peter Kettle, who I believe lives on McIntyre.
Peter, do you have a question now? But fortunately, the hearing has been closed, but if there's something informational we can provide to you.
I'm, I'm working on it. Peter, you just have to click the microphone button, the button in the bottom left-hand corner.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Again. Okay, apologies. I did have my hand up. I don't know why it didn't show. Paul actually mentioned about some people having problems with water runoff. I have a massive problem, and when I walked up Sheldon the other day, and I saw that every single tree on those lots had been removed, I think it's just a devastating area for a scenic area. I don't understand why the the people that develop these types of premises don't leave trees in, because it it looks such a mess compared to the surrounding area, and I'd like that to be considered with any new ones that go along, please.
Unfortunately, we don't have any, that's not within our purview. It's only the stone wall. And any, any trees in the public way for a scene on the scenic road underneath our, underneath the scenic road act.
Yeah, no, I do understand that, but who who identifies whether it's an A and R lot or one that needs to be approved?
Well, that's, that's a matter of mass general law, because it's a single lot, that it's a, it's a pretty much as long as there's frontage that can be accessed, then it's, then it's an approval not required.
I thought it depended upon the square footage area of the lot. I thought twenty, it was above twenty thousand square feet, then it has to be approved.
Can be any size.
Oh, okay, I'm being, I'm being given incorrect information, then I'll check into that.
It depends whether or not it turns into a subdivision where you're creating a road in multiple lots off the subdivision, and then, but what, once, if you're creating a lot off of a public way, that's a standard A and R.
Okay, all right.
So unfortunately.
It's important to understand, too, because I I had a long conversation with Council Boishman about this today. It's important to understand that the planning board does not have purview at all on trees on public, on private property. I I mean, unless it's a condo development where we can restrict what areas of the site get developed, when we're talking about A and R lots, we have no control whatsoever on how many trees someone takes out.
Wow, that's, that's amazing, isn't it?
That's true with every town, every city in town.
Yeah, well, maybe, maybe the statute needs to be changed, Paul.
I did, I, and I did tell Council Boishman that if 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 that's something that, you know, that that people see as a necessity, then you might have to look at an ordinance, an ordinance change to to determine, you know, what parts of, you know, sites can be developed, the, just the building envelope, things like that, but.
Right.
But yeah.
It's typically. Okay, well, thank you for taking my hand up.
Thank you. Nick Erickson is, has a hand raised, Paul.
Oh, yeah.
Hey, everybody, I just wanted to further clarify. So that that twenty thousand square foot threshold that Mr. Kettle mentioned, that's for the the stormwater ordinance, so if there's a land disturbance per the the city's ordinances that exceeds twenty thousand square feet, the DPW requires a stormwater management permit.
Okay.
And that ordinance change went into effect in late, late twenty nineteen, so it's right, kind of right around the time that all these house lots up in that, that neck of the woods were were being built out. But I'm not aware of of anything other than the stormwater ordinance that uses that twenty thousand square foot thresholds.
Well, thank you for that. Was wondering.
Thanks, Commissioner Erickson.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Kettle. I'll I'll reach out to you later this week to have some further discussion about your your property issues.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yep.
Thanks, guys. Thank you, Peter.
Thank you.
Do we know if Alin has joined us?
We do not. No, not yet.
Let's take care of the continuances then. So our next item on the agenda is a special permit insight plan review for Lurgan at one oh six East Street for a three family was continued from our January twenty-fourth meeting, and we did get a request in writing to continue to our March meeting. If there's anybody in the who's present here for that, just to know if you wanted, if there's all we have, what was submitted, which we can provide is additional site plan, and actually, there's also modifications being made to that site plan as well to meet stormwater and and DPW comments for their utility connections.
Herlen, when you got the list from FATV on the right-hand side, it usually says what they're there for. Did you see anyone that said one oh six East Street? Sorry, I don't see any hands raised either.
So we have a request from the applicant to continue to our March twenty-eighth meeting.
Make a motion to continue until our March meeting.
That can do.
There's a motion with the second to continue to our March twenty-eighth meeting, and say, all those in favor, say aye.
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 More? Aye, all those opposed? Okay, you know.
And Alin is.
Yes, sorry, sorry for being late.
No, no problem. Glad you're here. It was perfect timing.
Yes, good timing. So that that continued. We also have another one for continuation. We have a special permit modification of special permit twenty nineteen dash nineteen, final touch contractor LLC increased from four units to six units on Old Princeton Road. So we got a written request.
I don't.
For that also to our March meeting.
I don't remember the name of the gentleman on Old Princeton Road that was here before, but I don't see any hands up. If, you know, if anyone is here, that was the Old Princeton Road, the 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 condo project modification, and they're just asking to continue, so.
So if there's anybody here for that.
I don't see anyone.
Okay.
Make a motion, continue to our next meeting.
Is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
In a second to continue to our March twenty-eighth meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. All those opposed? All right. Continuation for that. I think that takes care of the ones that were officially continued.
Mm-hmm.
Great. Our next public hearing is a modification of special permit two thousand four dash twenty-three for Arden Mills located at one eighteen Bemis Road for conversion of clubhouse to office. Think we have.
Mr. Ted Rock.
Is it?
Ted, I don't know which one you're using, so I'm gonna unmute you on both of them, so, because I see you in there twice. Ted, when you, when you get a chance, just click the microphone button, and you should be able to speak. There you go.
Okay, can you?
Yes, we can.
Okay.
Thank you for joining us, and I want to say thank you for submitting those materials.
I'm hopefully, it's all good.
Yes. So just to explain briefly what you'd like to do, that you have an existing facility on the premises.
Yeah, we did get a, well, Tim from the Angels of Autism did get a special permit when we first rented a portion of the clubhouse to him. And now he's expanding, so he want, you know, he's, he's basically gonna take over the whole clubhouse.
Okay.
You know, I gotta understand, back in two thousand five, when Callahan modified this building to a clubhouse, it was supposed to be two hundred and forty condo units. And since we only have forty-eight, we don't have a lot of use of that building, and considering probably about ninety percent of the people here are retired. We we opened up a gym, and we had like two people a week, if that, using it. And it just wasn't, it didn't even pay for itself. It was you know, just lack of use.
Yeah, so Ted, you're, you're obviously, I I assume you're, you're on the board of trustees for, okay, so the the, and that was kind of my question, and it was more curiosity question, that it it doesn't matter for the approval, but the income that you generate for this goes to help you pay down your costs for the condo association, correct?
Yes.
Oh, perfect.
And can you clarify, it's the the name of the actual owner is the Falls at Arden Mills condominium trust?
Yes, that's correct.
I'm trying to find the, oh, there we go. So we're, so we're talking about, here's Bemis Road on the left-hand side of the screen.
Right.
This is the building that's built, this is the building we're talking. This is the building that's built, this is the building we're talking about, which.
Correct.
Now, there's there's still a pool there, correct? But it's, I mean, but nothing's being, it's not being used.
No, we we just had it filled in. We we just had John give us the final completion on filling the pool in, we had a cement floor poured in. So it's all, no pool.
Okay. And and they're gonna take up the entire building now?
Yeah, yeah, and that's why we wanted to go from, you know, I think the other special permit said professional use, basically same use. But we were hoping, and I don't know if we can call it business use. I mean, do we have to go for a special permit every time, should he leave?
Um, I think the change of, I think the the tenant does matter. Because part of this approval for the special permit is, first of all, is there adequate parking for that particular use? And more importantly, is that use compatible with the other uses in the neighborhood? Because when we approved this in oh four, whenever it was. I've been on the board almost the entire history of Callahan, so I I I know the issues you went through cuz we dealt with them too. So the intention when we approved this was never particularly using this as commercial space. So I think it's important for the integrity of the the project and the approval to make sure that whatever occupant is there. That they get, that they that they that we make sure as a board that they make sense for the neighborhood.
Well, you have to understand that there's nobody pickier than the people that live here.
But then, but that's only temporary, Ted, what happens if you aren't there or someone else isn't there?
Oh, I I I understand, but you know, you gotta live with your neighbors here too, you know?
Yep, so so the short answer is, the short answer is unless the other board members feel otherwise, I think, yes, you absolutely need to come back if it's a change of occupant.
Cuz it's a mix, cuz it's a pretty much a allow, now it's a mixed use property. So we always have to ensure, just ensure that the the tenant is appropriate.
Right.
I mean, if it turns into a convenience store or restaurant or something else, that has different implications for the neighborhood and parking and. So, you know, it's it it for the sake of argument, let's just leave it the way it is and say, you have a tenant there now. We'll, obviously, we're gonna, we're gonna vote on it tonight, and if there's ever anyone different in the future, we'll cross that bridge when we get to it.
Okay.
Um, I I did have a question for you, Ted, and I don't know if you know the answer to this, but do you know, and I know how many spaces are required, and I know how many spaces are provided. But do you know how many employees they have?
You know, it's at any one time, I'm gonna say, the most, maybe a dozen to fifteen at any one time.
And do you know how many people they service at any one time, meaning what's 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 usually the occupancy of that building if you go in there at peak times?
What they do is they have one on one with autistic kids. So if you've got twelve instructors, you have twelve students or children.
And they're busting or individual.
I didn't hear, are they busting or are they individual drop offs or? No, well, they they have a van, they go pick up some, very few drop offs, very few. Uh, the parents are never there, and even though if you drive by at any one time, you may see ten fifteen cars there. Um, most of them are not there because they do a lot of in home. Work with these kids. So they basically report to the office here and then they leave. And so most of the time, there's nobody in there. And when you get the kids, you know, to teach them socialization skills and things like that, then they bring them in. And I mean, we we have so much parking, it's it's.
Yeah, now, and 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 that was just one quick question I have for you, I know we talked about this in the past, but I know when I've been in the development for for the work that I do. It seems like, especially when it's nice, it seems like visitors just park along the main entryway. Do you have, if you have visitors, do they usually park in the parking lot across the street, this this one?
No, they they right across from the condos. There's parking all along the street.
Right.
Uh, there's gotta be thirteen, fourteen spaces on that side.
Yeah, I know it's pretty wide, I just, I I didn't, oh, I see, I, oh, well, I see spaces here, there were never spaces on the plan here, but they must have been.
There's actually a lot more spaces now than that that's originally on this plan that you're looking at. Because in front of the building itself, we have five or six.
Yeah, I see.
Then across the street, we got another thirteen or so, and then on the side there, which frankly, nobody uses. Yeah, there's another, I don't know, thirteen, fourteen spaces, see, we have underground parking.
Yeah.
So when you have sixty spaces, very few owners actually park across the street.
Yeah, right, yep, yeah, I was just trying to figure out you, I I honestly, I didn't know that there are actual spaces on this side, I knew there were a couple in front of the building, but. That it doesn't surprise me that it wasn't built to plan, so it doesn't surprise me that that ended up happening, but. But that being said, there's there's adequate parking there, so that was my concern, my question.
And for the parking, the clubhouse, this parking is based on eight thousand square foot building. One space per every three hundred square feet, so required parking is twenty seven spaces and you're providing nine, twenty nine spaces, twenty spaces directly in front of the clubhouse.
Right.
Yeah, there, and nine spaces adjacent to Ducknell Apartments and Bemis Road, which also includes two handicap spaces.
Correct.
And on the residential parking, there are six single bedroom units and forty two two bedroom, so a total of forty eight units, and they require parking sixty nine spaces. There's over eighty five spaces being provided. Plus, in a sixty gated basement garage spaces and outside parking for over twenty five, including two handicap. So it looks like there is plenty of parking, and I. Too, that the request is for. For the health, for a gym, over to a professional office space. And I think as long as it's kept as a business or professional office space, cuz the parking count would still be the same, whether or not the applicant would come back, as long as it's a similar use to that. You know, versus a change to a restaurant or other type of retail or anything of that nature. Could look at it that way.
Yeah, I don't have a problem necessarily with that. My my concern would be just saying, yes, all businesses are fine, that would be my concern.
Okay. As long as it's like professional.
Whatever you want, I think, I think it's safer just to do it the way we're doing it, we approve the use and go from there, but whatever, I mean, whatever the board wants.
Does anybody else have any thoughts on it?
I'll shut here.
But.
I agree with what Paul's saying, I think they should come before us if they're gonna do something different, I understand what Paul is saying also. It's just offices, it's no big deal, but it's wise to know what's coming in and out.
I think I think that, just to be clear, I think the biggest reason why I keep saying that is. I remember the approval and the history of this project, and it was never approved as a mixed use development. We're creating a mixed use development, so we should be very cognizant of who goes in there, because when we did have the original public hearings. It was approved as a condo development without mixed uses, so that's why I say every use we should, we should handle individually. Because not every use will make sense in that building.
Okay. Now, we do have, do we have any department comments from this?
No, I don't think so. No.
Okay. And there's a public hearing, so if there's anybody in the audience. Uh, remotely, that would like to speak on this matter, you raise, use the raise your hand function, we'll give it a, we'll give it like a minute, because.
Yeah, there might be a delay, uh, when Pete, now that Peter said that, that that he wasn't on, that his hand wasn't raised, maybe there's a delay, so we can give it a minute and. People, if anyone, as we're deliberating, it it makes sense to, for the future, some of the people that are here for later hearings. Raise your hand when the hearing comes up and we'll get to it at the appropriate time, that way, if there's a delay, we 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 know that you're you're waiting. That being said, I don't see any, Paula.
Okay. Does the board have enough information? To make a decision?
Yes.
Okay, there a motion to close the hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
There's a motion to close the hearing, uh, is there a second?
Second.
In a second, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, all those opposed? Okay, in discussion?
No, I'm fine with it, I'm I'm glad that it's helping out the unit owners there, I. I know, especially the people that have been, the few people that have been there since the beginning, they went through some trying times with the the original developer, and I'm glad that this will help. Kind of offset some of their costs, so good for them.
Any other thoughts from any other board members?
I'll make a motion to approve the modification of the special permit two thousand four dash twenty three. Conversion of the clubhouse to office space occupied by Angels of Autism.
Okay.
Second.
There's a motion with the second, and we'll take real call vote. All those in favor, say aye, all those opposing, opposed, I have Ellen.
Aye.
Alex.
Aye.
Amanda.
Aye, Tracy.
Aye.
Peter.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
Paula, aye. Thank you. Thank you, Ted.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Ted.
Thank you.
So, once the decision is written, it will have to be filed to become effective in the registry of deeds. Close that.
And and Herlyn might want to make a note that whoever picks it up, whether it's Ted or Angels of Autism, to make sure to remind them to record that special permit modification.
I will, I think we're gonna send out a email every time the decisions are made to notify applicants.
Great.
All right, now, we have another special permit before us this evening, we have special permit in site plan review for True Storage LLC. Conversion of eighty eight thousand square feet of existing plaza to self storage facility at four thirty two John Fitch Highway, which was also continued from our January twenty fourth meeting. Just even continued from our December meeting. In that regard, I believe there's a number of applicants here.
Yes.
And I also think that they they may be a, have to want to do a presentation.
So, Paula, I I see Attorney Avini has his hand raised, Attorney Avini, you're. Just click the unmute button and you're welcome to speak, if you or anyone has a presentation that you want to control, I can make you or anyone a panelist and you can share your screen.
Thank you, so Attorney Jeff Avini, I represent the applicant True Storage. Uh, with me tonight is Josh Sullivan from True Storage, he will have representation to make. We also have Bob Clark, which is a consulting engineer from Allen and Major Associates Inc., who did the narrative and also did some of the plans. In relation to the special permit and the site plan approval.
Excellent, uh, who would you, would you, would you like me to turn it over to someone?
Well, just just rather quickly to the board, this is a application for a special permit, a site plan approval. Um, to repurpose eighty seven thousand square feet of vacant retail space. At four thirty two John Fitch Highway, I'm sure the board is familiar with this site. Again, uh, this is a site that is in the Commercial Sea zoning district. Um, it's served by Town Water and Town Sewer, um, and the applicant is seeking a special permit. To in to convert this or repurpose it, if you will, to a class A climate controlled self storage facility. So if we could, Josh Sullivan, as a presentation, a PowerPoint, to walk the board through this project. And some other projects they've done, uh, so the board can get a feel for this, and then Bob Clark. Um, can go through the narrative if needed, or address any questions the board has in relation to the narrative and the project. So at this point, I can turn it over to Josh, and he can start his presentation or his PowerPoint.
Thank you.
And Josh, you're all set, you're a panelist, so you can just, if you, I'm sure you've done it before, but if you haven't, just hit the share screen button and then choose the screen you want to share. There you go.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that, I had headphones in there and they were not working for the moment, but I appreciate you making me a panelist and everyone can see my screen, okay? Yep. Okay, great, so I put together just a brief PowerPoint that I wanted to walk the board and the public through, just to give you an idea of, you know, overall project, self storage is a very. Fluid asset in in the past couple years, we really pride ourselves in the quality of product that we construct. And I think the best way to to exemplify that is to show you some some representations of of past projects and also what we're envisioning here. So I just like to start off with, although this isn't truly pertinent to the special permit, you know, why we're here, why is a self storage developer, we we chose this location. You know, that often gets brought up, the different, you know, presentations or approvals we're seeking. Um, and we do a vast amount of market research before we, you know. Consider an opportunity for self storage, so the the box on the top is a way that, you know, self storage is an industry nationally measures, whether there's pent up demand or not, and it's done on a square foot per person basis. Self storage, primarily climate controlled self storage, is a very locally.
It's okay, it's okay.
Locally focused service, eighty five percent of our customers live within three miles of our facility. And about forty percent of those are small businesses, independent business owners. Um, so that's what the square feet per person metric measures, within that three miles, how much existing storage there is serving those. That population, so the bottom screen, you can see I have a three and a five mile number, you know, within the three miles, there's eighty three, almost eighty four thousand people living there. Or sorry, fifty two thousand people living there, and only eighty four thousand square feet of self storage existing, so that brings you to one point six square foot a person, so. You know, less than twenty five percent of a balanced market, eight square feet per person is is what's considered a balanced market for self storage, so. We saw the opportunity for a lot of pent up demand needed for this type of storage. I'm gonna just explain, you know, what differentiates us from kind of the existing historical storage facilities you may be more familiar with. So as I mentioned, eighty five percent of our customers live within three miles of the facility, thirty to forty percent of those are small businesses. Um, that need the climate controlled capacity. You know, typically, you envision a self storage as a one story outdoor building with garage doors and a barbed wire fence, not offering any climate control or or real security beyond that. Um, which really limited the amount of products you could store there, you know, especially with our extreme climate up here in New England. Humidity in the summer, cold harsh winters, it really limits what can be stored in this older version of of self storage, so. I mean, we have everything from blue collar workers using it for their inventory, from plumbers to electricians, tile guys. We also have lenders, mortgage companies, civil engineers who are required to keep a number of files. For a number of years within their offices, and it's very expensive to keep these files in their office space. Much more affordable for them if they have to go back and archive files to just rent a a storage unit. We also have music shops where our headquarters are in Manchester, we have a facility there where Manchester Music Stores instruments. Because they're able to keep them at a certain humidity level and in climate control, so those are just a couple examples of what differentiates this product from historical self storage facilities. And I like to put this up on the screen just to make, you know, that point, on the left is really what you think of in unmanned. You know, barbed wire fence, very industrial looking facility, and on the right, that's actually a ground up, new construction we did. And, you know, we really put a lot of effort to make these a a class A, very high end facility. And this is a picture of our typical office, we also go above and beyond in our flooring, as you'll see throughout, you know, if you walk in, or if you've been to any of these other storage facilities, it's typically poured concrete. We actually go above and beyond, and this is life proof vinyl plank flooring, it's what people finish their basements with in their home, actually, we find it's a cleaner look. Makes the property look better, um, and people feel better about storing their items in a facility like this, so this is the leasing office. Which is open generally from about nine thirty to six thirty, Monday through Thursday, and then roughly eight thirty to to seven thirty on the weekends. So anyone can come in here and rent a storage unit, they can also buy packaging and moving materials, they don't have to be a customer of ours, any. Member of the public can come in here and get bubble wrap or cardboard boxes or a hand truck, anything like that, a dolly, rather. And what I like to point out is behind the leasing office desk is, you know, our monitors with our vast amount of security, if if you ever go into another facility. I'd be willing to bet they have less than half of. I'd be willing to bet they have less than half of the security features that we do. We really go above and beyond, making sure every angle of of the facility is is covered and monitored. This is just another interior shot. Again, showing how clean and tidy we keep our facilities. Our employees that are on-site during those hours do hourly walkthroughs, if not more frequent frequent, to make sure the facility is clean. Um, and just to make sure everything is locked and and secured as it should be. Here's another angle of the interior of a facility, and I should also mention that every customer that leases a unit from us has a specific PIN code that they are given to access the building. So we know exactly how many people enter the building, how many people exit the building, what time that is. And we also restrict access that way. This is not a twenty-four-seven facility. They are only allowed access within the business hours of the office with maybe an hour or two on either end. But this is not a facility where someone can show up at two AM and access their unit. Here's an example of a freight elevator for someone to get their goods up to the upper level. That's not needed in Pittsburgh, as we're proposing just a single-level facility. Again, here's another picture of of our vast security features. And I like to put this side by side together. On the left is, you know, where you might go to another facility. On the right is actually a unit that I own at one of our facility or that I lease rather. And I just helped my parents downsize some to a condo from their house and, you know, had to get some furniture out uh from their house and decided to store it for when I have a time to need it. And I know whenever I have to go and access that unit again, it's gonna be clean and tidy and look exactly as as how I I put it away. And I think anyone, you know, considering facilities, we would rather be in the unit on the right. So this is our uh, just a proposed rendering of what we plan to do with the exterior of the site. As Jeff mentioned, um, it is currently vacant. Um, all of the existing retail that is on-site, um, we are in the process of renewing their leases if we haven't already. So we do intend to keep all of the existing retail, the cinema, the dry cleaners, harbor freight, um, the out parcels out front, all of those will remain as they have, um, and we're we're very happy to have them. And you know, what I like to stress here, and I'm gonna show you some examples. Self-storage is very cohesive with these traditional retail uses. Uh, we've been doing this, you know, although we're based in New England, we do this across the country and and time and time again, we're approached with these vacancies, whether it's an old grocery store or a large anchor space in a mall. And we've worked with some of the largest mall and retail owners in the country, Simon Property Group, Namdar Realty, Transform Co., Sears, Seritage. There are all these big-box retailers that have gone bankrupt, um, you know, pre-COVID, during COVID, and afterwards, you know, just as recently as Bed Bath &amp; Beyond. I'm sure you guys have heard they're closing about a hundred and fifty to three hundred stores across the country, Arti City, Macy's, Sears, Toys R Us, all of the above and many more. Um, unfortunately, aren't able to to uh to keep those spaces like they were previously. So this is just a historical photo of what it looks like. Or looked like historically rather, and you know, what we cha- plan to change. And what I want to stress here, this is kind of a a site view of of how it was for really about past eight years. Um, so as I mentioned, you can see the tenants, the cleaners, the buffet, harbor freight and cinema, all in the laundry at the far right, which all of which will remain. And what I want to emphasize on this is that although the paper store was the tenant and there was a furniture tenant in the rear, they weren't traditional retail uses. They were on a month-to-month basis, really the only reason the owner owner had them in there was to keep the lights on, not making money, not profitable at all. And very low rent month-to-month, and they were using it as bulk storage. Um, you walk through the paper store and they used it as storage of their, you know, uh different uh furniture and and pieces that they would need to build out their other stores. It was really just a bunch of mannequins and displays and mirrors and things of that nature. Um, and same with the furniture. There was no actual furniture sale going on there. It was just bulk storage of of furniture. Um, and the entire time they were in there, the previous owner was trying to lease these to traditional retail users and there was no interest until our group was able to come in there, maintain the existing retail and convert the vacant space to the higher and better use. So these are some of our, you know, completed facilities that are cohesive with retail. This is the one I was mentioning in Manchester, New Hampshire. Um, we have a number of inline retail tenants such as Golden Corral, Firehouse Subs, Poke Bowl, massage therapy, smoothies, um and storage as well. Now, this was actually given an award last year as one of the the uh top retail plazas in Manchester. This was in Bourne, Massachusetts. Um, as you can see, obviously, this is a little bit different as there's outdoor storage, which we are not proposing at all in Pittsburgh, but the the whole right side of that plaza is traditional retail, a dry cleaner, similar to Pittsburgh, a liquor store, a pizza store. Um, all of which thrived and are still doing great today. Um, this is a former grocery store that we converted, just to give you a before and after, to show you what we can really do with these facilities. We don't just put lipstick on a pig. We go in there and we make it a Class A facility. This is at the Swansea Mall in Swansea, Massachusetts. Um, we actually purchased the entire mall here. And um, it's, you know, adjacent to residential. There are apartments next door. There's a Walmart in the background, which you can see. There is a a large church and a gym next door. So again, very cohesive with these alternative uses. This is just a before and after photo of what was formerly an anchor space in the mall and how we converted it to storage. It's just another view of Swansea as well. This is a facility in the Midwest in Indiana, actually. Um, this was a former Toys R Us. Um, again, we are not proposing any outdoor storage. Um, we did it this location, but it's very much in their main retail corridor. You can see Best Buy, McDonald's, Arby's, all of which are are right on the same road. This is one that's under construction right now. Um, on the right is an existing Tops Market Grocery Store. Um, the space in the center view was formerly a Gander Mountain, which is similar to a Bass Pro Shop or Cabela's, which also, like the other retailers I mentioned earlier, has reduced their their retail footprint throughout the country. Came to us with this vacancy and and we were able to take it off their hands and are converting it to to self-storage as we speak.
Josh, is True is True Storage the own the the owner of the entire plaza? Are you leasing as a tenant?
No, we are the we are the owner. So uh True True Storage is a subsidiary of Brady Sullivan Properties.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
This was a former Food Lion Grocery Store. Again, with existing uh retail on either side, we're converting this as we speak. There's a pizza place, Goodwill, a soup shop, and Dollar Tree in addition to to self-storage at this location. Um, that just gives you another view of of the retail tenants. This is a former Macy's department store that we converted. Um, this is actually with the City Chamber of Commerce at the uh grand opening. This was a former um office supply store and and call center, which we just converted as well. This is a in Ohio, a a former Dick's Sporting Goods, which was then repurposed to a furniture store. Then uh that when they went out of business, we went in there and um we're current currently converting that to to self-storage as well. Um, again, in a very major re- retail quarter. This is a proposed rendering of what we're doing there. Um, this is in Florence, Kentucky. It's a again, another mixed uh mixed retail uh plaza with a antique mall um on the far left, which that's the space we converted to storage, the entirety of the retail remained. That's how it looks now. And this was in Warwick, um Rhode Island. Um, again, an existing structure, and you can kind of see different phases of construction and how great we made that property look. Another really stark before and after. This was a a very, very um rough property in in New Bedford, Massachusetts, which we converted. And you can see, you know, the top looks night and day compared to to what it was. And again, there's there's another view of of what we were able to do there.
Thank you.
Another view. So so that's all I have for you. I I appreciate you taking the time to let me present that. And um, as Jeff said, we also have Bob Clark on from Allen and Major Associates. Happy to answer any questions relating to to Cider Civil. So um, that's all I have. I'll I'll open it up to to you guys and let me know if you have any questions. Happy to answer.
Okay, thank you. I do have lots of questions. You just showed us like a pretty, a lot of examples of facelifts. I don't see much of a facelift though on the proposal for the plaza. In the application, in the narrative, pretty much it said all is needed is line painting. Um, that parking lot is needs a lot of work. There's a a lot of pavement missing. Um, it's really a poor state. Um, in that regards, the entrances to Plaza need to be looked at because some people even, they're not that visible per se and her um for the ins and outs. And if you haven't, if you're not familiar with the area, it is very much that parking, that parking area and that John Fitch Highway is subject to a lot of flooding. So there's a lot issue with stormwater.
Yep.
Um, and I didn't see any of that pretty much addressed in the application. The other um aspect, and I am not opposed to mixed use, but I am opposed where where this is an industrial use in a commercial district. This is Pittsburgh's, of like, let's say, prime in this middle of the city. We only have five, like, main commercial plazas. Um, in the city, this being one of them, and it is really set for, sees a huge volume of traffic. So really set for a lot of like retail and restaurant and other type of use, which is lacking um in the city. Um, so like to see a lot more on storefronts up front. If you're looking to do some type of storage, it looks like it's that's even wrapping around the cinema um to be more of um you know, you have a you have a front, but it's mostly behind and maybe you have storefronts still retail towards the front to keep the retail aspect of the plaza um for the residents of the city, uh rather than having to go up to the city, out of the city for a lot of amenities. We do have, I know you you mentioned about the storage pieces around and about there's um a lack of um storage-type facilities, but we do have a lot, also a lot of industrial property on the city suitable for uh storage uses. Again, it's looking at the, again, the higher use. This is a a prime commercial area. We actually want to see traffic in here, not, you know, some minimize, you know, the parking there. This is a prime area to actually attract um some of those venues. So those are just some of the comments I want to, you know, put out there for some thought. We've and I certainly appreciate the investment into this um facility as well. Um, but it 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 needs more in that regard. And again, I'm not opposed to some mixed use, but there's too much, it's too much, my estimation, I'm too much with the eighty-eight thousand square feet, which is more than half of that uh commercial um plaza at this point.
I I'd be happy to have Jeff touch on, you know, the preference of of retail use, but just in terms of the possibility of getting retail in there, I just want to emphasize that it was tried for years to get retail in there. They had had it for lease, brought up and and met with a number of potential tenants and no one wanted to take the space. That's why it's, it was month-to-month with the paper store and furniture for so long until our group, who had the bandwidth to to maintain the existing retail and convert it. Um, if someone, another retail user wanted to go in there, they would have been in there by this point.
Well, it takes investment. I understand that. And but also, you even mentioned big box spaces and it really may may not be suitable for another big box space. Maybe it needs to be subdivided into something smaller and more rentable. Or useful. But in that regard, it's like, don't just throw the hands up in the air and say, well, would you kind of make the best of it?
Yeah, I would also challenge the interpretation, although I know maybe specifically to Pittsburgh, you know, it's a very fluid product self-storage, as I tried to exemplify in the PowerPoint. And you know, it's been very slow to change in a lot of these di- different jurisdictions as being viewed as industrial, but it is very much as I described with the business uses, the local uses for consumers coming in there. Um, it is cohesive with with retail and actually our property in Syracuse, New York, they listed as a retail use. They've seen these facilities and very successful in these types of developments, and they completely reclassified the asset as as being retail, just to give you an example.
I, as an example, I understand. But each each is case by case. Each each city and town, as you have, is each a form of development and either has some or not enough in some cases, um or doesn't want it in some other cases.
Yeah.
Um, we like to actually spur some more commercial growth within the city. And more amenities in the city rather than having to travel outside of the city. Familiar with the area. And again, the traffic count there is 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 very suitable.
Right, right. I if and I I understand.
Infrastructure. And again, and it's like, even though the plaza across the street, yes, there is a self-storage component, but it's not the front, it's not the face front of the of the plaza.
I will say.
Also concerns with, I would even say, even driving behind the facility to do any type of business, so to be driving behind the facility to do business.
Okay. If if I could, man, I'm Jimin.
A couple of points I'd like to make.
Oh, good, I'm sorry.
Hello?
Yes.
Okay, yeah. Uh, Josh, just a couple of points I'd like to make. Uh, I've lived in Pittsburgh all my life. And I can remember when that plaza was amazingly alive and 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 active. It was a destination for the community and and beyond. There were stores in there like King's, Child World, Ann Chan's Restaurant, Radio Shack, Hotlands, Williams Jewelers, CVS. And a Friendly's Restaurant that was so busy, you normally had to wait for a booth. I also understand that things have changed. And it might be a challenge to fill some of these retail spaces today. And I also understand how attractive and easy it would be to simply forget the retail challenge and fill the spaces with self-storage units. However, John Fitch Highway is a major retail corridor in the city. And I'm not sure I'm on board with giving up such a prime and vast retail space to such an inactive use. Instead, I believe we should be focusing on a use that'll generate vehicle and pedestrian traffic that'll bring new life and energy into the area that might enhance and support some of the existing businesses. I understand completely the value of the importance and the need for self-storage facilities. But again, I'm having some trouble warming up to the location. Uh, I can also picture what might happen in the future if this permit were granted. There would be a situation where uh one of the retail businesses that are there right now might uh decide they're gonna leave. And it might be difficult again to rent the space. And I can picture uh the firm coming in front of the planning board again and wanting to convert that space to self-storage. And that might have a ripple effect on that plaza, and what we're gonna end up with is uh more than eighty-eight thousand feet of self-storage. It'll be one massive self-storage tombstone. And uh I do agree with Madame Shear that that highway is incredibly busy. And uh the a self-storage facility might not be the best use for that space.
Understood, Peter. I I appreciate your comments. Jeff, did you want to make some comments?
Yeah, just a couple of things to the board. Um, I've been in land use and practicing law now thirty-three years, which is seems like a long time, but I still have a lot to learn and I learn every day. I also sit on a bank board. And uh routinely, we have discussions about, you know, economic forecasts in the area. And as Josh, you know, somewhat highlighted, this property was made available for retail use for an extended period of time. And there wasn't a lot of activity. And I'm and I am sensitive to the board's concern that they don't want this to be a magnet, if you will, in this in this location and gobble up, you know, what you're considering to be prime retail area. But the reality is, there's not a lot of retail opportunity out there. And I think what we should focus on is what is the highest and best use of this location. You know, I, John Fitch is busy and um, you know, the traffic counts, you know, spell that out. I did have a conversation with Liz Murphy, and I know down the road there's gonna be some improvements um to John Fitch Highway, I guess, as a grant, but that's a couple of years out. So I I think what my client has proposed here is the highest and best use uh of this location. And again, folks, I think you have to look at just the sheer reality of it. I mean, Peter mentioned um several um retail uses that were there. And, you know, for example, Friendly's has downsized. Um, Child World, there's no such thing anymore. Um, Radio Shack is gone. So I think the board should really consider the focus of what would be the highest and best use of this location. You know, I will tell you, I I represent a lot of different clients and all the different projects. Um, the PowerPoint presentation about what they're gonna make this look like. Um, I, this company goes above and beyond um anybody's expectations about how the project's gonna be visualized. And I do think Josh has given a great um presentation about how they can dovetail this use into other retail applications. So again, you know, I I know um there's a perception that, you know, this is gonna kill retail. Um, I don't think that's the case at all. There is some retail use in front. Um, that's going to be existence. They've worked on the, it's existing and they're going to try to foster and continue those uses. And I just think this is a really good project for this location. I just think it makes a lot of sense.
Thank you for your comments.
Jeff, would the owner of the property be, be opposed to guaranteeing? If the retail spaces available right now, square footage wise, would be guaranteed in perpetuity?
I guess, Peter, would he, I, I don't know what you mean by guaranteeing, because I mean.
In other words, it cannot, in other words, it could never be changed into self-storage space. It has to remain retail.
So I guess to, maybe just to, to clarify a point. Our existing proposal is sort of like for eighty-seven thousand square feet to be basically repurposed into. The self-storage. And you're asking if my client would entertain a potential condition that the rest of the plaza would not be. Turned into self-storage? Is that, is that what I'm hearing?
Correct.
Um, I don't think we can, we can give you a, a answer on that tonight. But depending, I guess, on how the rest of this hearing goes and where we go, uh, with other potential conditions, you know, we can talk about it.
Myself, I still think it's too much. And you didn't even show any, I always do have concerns with traffic flow and safety and it's not from the people entering the plaza. Because it's like you haven't even structured, you have it structured that there's um consumers going behind the building. In that regard, so there's a safety issue with that. As well, too. Um, but again, I, my, my main concern also is that, again, not opposed to a mixed use, but the certain percentage or. Um, or even a perception is the frontage that it's like, yes, you have big box locations. And maybe it's suitable for some smaller spots to be reworked in that regard. But you have a, a front presence there, but not as large as what you're proposing and maybe using the back portion for. Storage, but having a lot smaller commercial spaces up front to still have that commercial aspect. To the plaza. But again, also, I don't see any, I did not see anything, a huge um difference in facelift. Either. I mean, we've had this presentation, Justin, nice presentation about all of what they've done to other buildings and they're pretty much saw like a fresh stripe on this one. In that regard, and it would be lovely to have like that, you know, conversation of like really what to do in other, other um. Commercial enterprises or buildings on that property, even like towards frontage. To re, bring some more robustness back to that uh plaza. Landscaping, as you can see, is very lacking. There needs to be investment in that, in, we, we understand that. But just because of the past history of it, doesn't, again, it's saying this is the highest and best use. I think the highest and best use is commercial. To add some mixed use, the industrial, to mix it up a little bit. With the self-storage, again, I'm not opposed to some um that, but not to the magnitude that's being proposed at this time. On configuration.
Paula, um, I, I just, I, I know Amanda has her hand raised, but just quickly, Amanda, I want to apologize. I had to run out. My wife came in panicked, my dog ran away. Um, I ended up getting him, so not a problem, but I missed the presentation. Um, so I think um it's only appropriate because I missed the presentation. That if we vote tonight, I abstained from the vote. Um, because I did not see what the applicant had to present.
Okay.
Um, if, if there's, there's still questions and we continue it, I will certainly make it a point. To catch up on what I had missed. Um, but I apologize to the applicant. I unfortunately couldn't have been helped, so.
Right. Also, it's a, it is a public hearing. That was just some of my initial thoughts. And after reading the, the narrative portion of, of um, the materials. So Benny, but when I has any questions at this time, we can also go to the department comments and to the public for comments.
Amanda does.
Good, Amanda.
Uh, thanks. Um, so I think it's not the highest and best use for that. That part of Fitchburg. I think there's still potential for change right now and things. Things are, things are changing and I, I know that we're coming out of a, like a dead time. And it would be a sad thing to just turn that into storage for people. And I just don't want to encourage people to buy more stuff that they can store somewhere. People need to think about what they're buying and, and, and not locking it up in a cube. And I don't want to encourage people to do that. And I don't want John Fitch Highway to be the place to store your stuff. I think there's got to be a better way uh to use that section of that strip mall. You could put up a couple of walls, you could make a couple little shops. There's. There's a lot of different things we could do and I don't think storing our belongings is. The best answer for that spot.
Is there anybody in the, anybody else on the board have any, or any questions for that?
I had, I just had a quick question. This is Alin. I was just wondering if the applicant had any response to. The letter that Liz Murphy filed, um, basically stating that this is not the best use. That it would essentially create a passive use. And if they have any response to what was contained in that letter.
Yes, I'll, Jeff spoke to Liz a couple of times and I'll, I'll let him answer that.
Yeah, I, I did speak to Liz. You know, and after speaking to Liz, and I'm not going to, you know, of course, speak for her. But I did speak to her and, and, you know, she and I reviewed it and we did talk about, you know, the, the, the retail availability. And we also talked about the fact that this has been a vacant uh property for a good period of time. Um, and Liz is concerned uh where security, which, which we're more than willing to address and we have addressed. Um, including, you know, a, a monitoring of the parking lot and a direct feed to the police department, if that's what this board. Um, would, would like. And she also um had a concern about uh the flood zone, which um. We can address either in the narrative or um from, from Bob in relation to the updated FEMA maps. Um, so, you, you know, Liz brought up issues in her, in her uh narrative. In her, in her letter that we addressed, you know, as far as security, as far as um access. You know, and that it's not going to be uh, you know, someone's. Temporary residence because the security features aren't going to allow that. Um, this control's in place that it's not going to be used for uh making manufacturing narcotics. Because they're not going to have access to electricity. So I mean, we, all those issues can be addressed. And again, I had a follow-up conversation with Liz and, and we had another discussion. Um, and again, I'm not going to speak to, for her, but, you know, I don't want to say she was on board, but I think after I reached out to her. Um, her level of comfort, you know, uh, was, was, was brought up to a level which I don't, you know, think is. Something that's inappropriate. I think it's, it's again a viable project. Um, and I understand, again, the board's position about, you know, wanting retail or trying to develop retail. It's just not in the economic forecast. You know, and, and to Peter's point, you know, we can try to develop the retail and all of a sudden we have a cycle of vacancies again. We have a cycle of failed businesses. So to, again, emphasize what Josh highlighted. This company has a past history of being able to dovetail this use and with other retail operations. And create some synergy where, where, you know, it benefits everybody, the community, the public, you know, in the city of Fitchburg.
Yeah.
And I'm sorry, I didn't see that Liz was on the panelist list, so I want to apologize.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if she's on or not. I haven't, I don't.
Yeah, she is.
I, I am. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Okay. Uh, yeah, so. Um, Jeff, I, I have to say the conversation you and I had is somewhat different than the presentation I saw here tonight. Our conversation did focus more on the potential for retail space to be developed at the front. Um, portion of the parking lot and to be close to the street front. And I've heard nothing about that today. Which I was a little surprised by, um, because I think. Having um retail up in the front will allow that uh passive use to kind of shrink. To the background and not be so prominent. But, but I'm not hearing any of that discussion about retail at the front of the, of the street. Here today, so um, that, you know, our conversation was based on that. And, um, and this presentation is very different than that. Um, but I also, if I could, just wanted to make one point that um those spaces that have been underutilized. For quite a lot of ti- a long time have also not been invested in, in a very long time. And so of course, um, they're not going to be thought after because the, the property owner didn't try to improve the space. Tried to, to break it up into smaller bits where um smaller retailers might want to use that. On the flip side, we see the Market Basket Plaza across the street where there was some investment and now that's, that's almost fully occupied. Um, and other plazas along that strip are certainly occupied. So it's really just this plaza in particular. That has a lot of vacancy on John Fitch. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz.
Paula, Tracy has her hand raised.
Um, I, I was actually going to say the same thing Liz um said. That, that no investment has been put in to that property for a long time. Um, not saying that that's the reason why it's, you know, completely, almost vacant or whatever. But my other thing too is what Peter had said. If a tenant leaves, what is the intention of that space? That, that was one of the questions I had for the.
Yeah, I, I'd be happy to address that. And um, as Jeff mentioned, you know, I don't have the authority to make that call, but I would absolutely be happy to discuss that with ownership. Um, that we would commit to not converting any of the other spaces to storage. Um, as I mentioned in my presentation, um, we are working with all of those retailers to extend their leases. We're not just running them out and, and hoping they leave or anything like that. We very much want them to stay and are working with all of them and have. To my knowledge, that's a different team that works on that. Um, but to my knowledge, almost all of them have signed renewals and extensions on their leases. Um, and I'll just touch quickly on Liz. I know you were mentioning you had talked about retail. Central retail uses up front um along the road with, with Jeff. And the reason that wasn't in my presentation is because no um. Deals with a specific tenant has been made. Um, so I didn't want to rep, misrepresent something, but we are actively working with. Central pad site users to get traditional retail, um, like a coffee shop or something like that in, in the excess parking space.
Well, retail begets retail. I mean, business begets business and more business. And I would say even the, the plan you presented is still disheartening in that. You even have storage like surrounding the theater, like you're trying like to be squeezing it out to take it over. I mean, it's not conducive to having one, like a theater use and then nothing else there. It's like, so it is kind of like a. You know, there's no man associated amenities with that. It's like when, you know, to, was it some business to drive other business?
I apologize because I, 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 I missed the presentation. So this might have come up and. Um, if it has, obviously, we can, you can just table it all together because it sounds like the conversation was had. But my initial thought when I looked at this plan wasn't necessarily in opposition to the um storage facility. It was more in opposition to how the building is being presented for um. For, for that, um, for that use. Meaning, and I, and I think it was alluded to, which means you might have talked about it. Um, someone had mentioned, Paula had mentioned, you know, that, 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 that maybe the back of the building makes sense. Was there conversation or was there thought about breaking up the residential spa- I mean, excuse me, the, the storefront spaces into. More manageable size spaces, let's say, you know, a, a, and again, I don't know how big this is, but let's say for the sake of argument that, what's up on the screen. If you take this and you cut them straight across and you keep all the residential storefront except for an entrance into here. You keep them as, as uh commercial storefronts and then you use the back for um, for your um storage operation. Um, was that thought about at all? Was, did we have that conversation?
It was, it was mentioned, but.
So, yeah, I, I can speak to that from, from the applicant's side. So, yeah, that was suggested as an alternative from, I believe, Paul and maybe some other, some other board members as well. If that's the, the will of the board and the, the, the direction you want us to go, you know, I'd be happy to discuss that with ownership and see if there's a concept that can be done there. I can speak to why that wasn't done to this point. Um, and kind of touching on the points previously brought up by, by Liz and I believe it was Tracy that, you know, no investment's been made here. Well, it's a big risk um to make that investment and create space, not having any tenants or anyone lined up and just hoping they come after having. You know, created that space. So we'll absolutely, if that's the, the, the will of the board, you know, entertain that. But just to answer that question, why hasn't money been invested? Because it's, it's a big risk and that's an expensive risk to make. You know, we're, we're self-storage developers, which is why, you know, we proposed the conversion of this to self-storage. But um, like I said, I'd be happy to discuss a concept of that nature with the ownership.
Are, are, you said we're self-storage developers. Is the building owner the self-storage developer? Or are you leasing this space from the building owner?
No, we are the owner.
Okay, so you purchased this with the sole intent of creating self-storage space?
Correct.
Knowing that it wa- knowing that it wasn't by right, right?
Correct. So we had done some preliminary vetting um with the city through Mike O'Hara, um, who gave us a very positive reaction to this proposal. Um, you know, we weren't expecting um. The current opposition.
Do we have any one in the public venue?
Yes, Mary, Mary Jo has her hand raised.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Yes. Um, uh, for the applicant's benefit, I'm Mary Jo Bohart, Economic Development Director for the City of Fitchburg. I work for Liz Murphy. And until just about a week ago, when he retired, I was a colleague to Mike O'Hara. And I happened to sit pretty close to him. And although I may not have been privy to whatever phone conversations the applicant team had with him. What I do know is that we, Fitchburg, have been overwhelmed by self-storage proposers in the past two years. And I can't imagine Mike being thrilled with this. Um, it's not appropriate for me to speak of someone who's gone, but, but. This use is not something that any of us would have been thrilled at, given how many simultaneous and all going into industrial areas pretty much. So the one thing I wanted to throw out there for uh the applicant's benefit, and it echoes what Liz and Tracy had already said. This plaza looks of yesteryear. And so um, no investment was made by the prior owner for the longest time. And it was developed as the applicants probably are well aware, in an era when it was a sea of parking and, you know, everything was set back very far. If you look at other retail plazas elsewhere that have been repurposed, I'm thinking of Legacy Place in Dedham. Possibly, you know, things that have gone on in Marlboro, you know, when, when, when it's completely redone, obviously. Um, the consumer retail getting closer to the main road. Um, or, or making the whole thing into a campus, obviously, is a whole other ball of wax. You guys are self-storage developers. So, you know, you had something else in mind. But I just wanted to let you know that just coincidentally, in our local paper today. Our sister city who has a dying mall and, and a lot of repurposing to do over in Lemonster. Had a nice article about a rather sizable commercial recreation facility, much like the Apex Center in Marlboro. It'll go by the name of uh Launch. And I realize that's not what you're proposing. But there are creative commercial uses that one by one are being proposed in what had been kind of big box retail. Plazas and things. And unfortunately, it's hard to get excited about something that doesn't have anything to do with commerce. And um, as, as Paula had aptly said, your use with the site plan you've got presents a tremendous amount of frontage. Um, with self-storage rather than having, even if they were smaller, some commercial storefronts along the frontage stretch. That you're showing as storage. One last question and then I'll be quiet. And that is, there were just a lone number of like seven or eight units. That are on the other side of the theater and it, it just seemed like such an afterthought, almost ridiculous. And I couldn't imagine why um you all chose to do that other than to maximize every square foot. And then that was just a thought. It seems very unusual. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Jo. Yeah, Nick Erickson has his hand raised.
Good, Nick.
Thanks, Paula. Um, for the applicant's benefit, my name is Nick Erickson, Commissioner of Public Works with the City of Fitchburg. Um, I burned, wanted to bring up two, two points here with this, this site, uh, one being the flooding. Um, we do have a major flooding issue where Baker Brook during really intense rainfalls jumps its bank. And flows through the original stream alignment, which happens to be right through the center of the parking lot here. Um, I'm not sure how. Um, I'm not sure how that would impact a self-storage facility. Um, but I I um, would assume it would be a a major consideration as far as just damaging goods that are being stored in there, um, if if the property does flood out. Um, so I think that should be taken in into consideration with with um, a decision that's made regarding this this proposal. Um, the second point I wanted to bring up is just that the the city's making a major investment in this corridor between Summer Street and Lunenburg Streets along John Fitch Highway. Um, we're undergoing a a major roadway redesign right now. Um, we funded the twenty-five percent design with grants through the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. We're funding the the final design through one hundred percent um, with money from the American Rescue Plan Act funds that the city received from the federal government. So um, all that being said, we're also um, completing the design in accordance with Mass DOT's requirements in order to receive construction funding through the state's Transportation Improvement Program. Um, so this corridor within the next ten years or so, depending on and where the the funding schedule for the the Transportation Improvement Program um, ends up. Um, this this corridor is going to receive some some major facelift, so to speak. So um, because the city's making such a large investment, because the state's potentially making such a large investment, um, I think there's a huge potential for this property in particular to grow into something that i- it isn't now and hasn't been for many, many years. Um, and I would agree with a lot of the feedback that we've heard tonight that um, self-storage is perhaps not the the highest and best use of the property, given the major investments that the city is making on their end over the next next five to ten years. Um, so with that, I'll yield the floor. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Is there any other um, person in the audience with their hand raised? That would like to speak on this matter?
I don't, I don't see anyone, no. I was trying to find, I I don't know, I assume the applicant, I I don't know how long you've owned the building for, but I would assume you're aware of the flooding issue there. I was trying to find a picture. I had a picture quite a while ago of actual, there were, when it had flooded, there was a pond in the parking lot, which happens relatively routinely with with heavy flooding, but there were actually some fish in the pond in the parking lot. It it's something I had never thought I would see. So I couldn't find the photo, though.
Yeah, yeah. So as the applicant, we we are aware of that issue and I can let Bob speak to, you know, efforts being done to to solve that.
Awesome.
Are you thinking of, as it was mentioned, like additional uh, pads or development of the site? Um, restructuring it? Um, addressing landscaping, stormwater, the pavement, the entrances?
Yep, all all of that. Um, Bob, are you, are you there? Could you unmute yourself?
Yeah, I can. Hold on, I, yeah, he's he should be good.
Yeah, so we can, we can um, reach out to the DPW and discuss any drainage that um, that they're looking for us to study out. And obviously, if there's some modifications to the landscaping, uh, we could, we could also reach out to the planner and also the DPW uh, director to speak on that. Uh, we will be filing and um, filing with the Conservation Commission and walking through the floodplain. There have been some new maps um, proposed recently. Uh, elevation right now is three seventy-six. The elevation of a building is at three seventy-six point four, and they are proposing to change that flood elevation to three seventy um, three seventy, uh, three seventy-seven. So we'll be walking through with the Conservation Commission, any any issues with the with the plaza and the floodplain. Um, so with that, I'll turn it back to the board. Any other questions?
Is the, I guess, a big question is whether the applicant's open to reworking the current proposal?
Yes, to to include the more traditional retail use as as you previously proposed.
Yes.
Yes, if if that's the the will of the board, we'd be happy to discuss that with ownership and see if we can come up with a a more traditional retail mixed-use concept as you described with maybe some storefronts in the front and the storage in the rear. Um, again, I can't make that determination right now, but I I'd be happy to meet with our team and see if we can design a concept that'd be more um, appealing to the board.
Okay.
I I would, I would have to, you know, I would have to venture a guess that that most likely, aside from the aforementioned reasons that everyone else has talked about, but most likely, one of the issues you have to try and rent rent a building like this currently is the vast space that that middle tenant takes up that probably have very few possibilities. But if you split it up into smaller sizes, just like someone had mentioned across the street, um, the the Market Basket Plaza, where you have, with the exception of Market Basket and Big Lots, where you have smaller tenants in the middle. Um, I I, you know, I think that that kind of solves the city's purpose of not losing those, you know, future commercial tenants and maybe your purpose of allowing some storage to the rear of the building uh, because of how big the building is.
Yep, un- understood. We'd we'd be happy to entertain a concept like that.
Take a a look at, uh, I guess some of the this uh, safety concern would be like trying to avoid traveling behind the building on the uh, probably pretty much like the Harbor Freight side. It looks like the right-hand side may be more conducive.
Right, yep.
Aspect with some of the loading dock pieces there, if you're looking for exterior access.
You definitely need quite a few cameras around the rear of the building if you're gonna access it at all, because I've been there many times and but when I was younger, many, many years ago, I worked at Cinemworld, um, breaking up boxes in the back. And there's, there's quite a few areas there that are they they're, they're secluded and they, you know, they need to have some, um, you know, I I don't know what the lighting is now, but it needs to be adequate. It needs to have plenty of cameras around that building so that there aren't any um, a- any issues with that.
I mean, even if you have concept wise, it'd be like, look, it'd be helpful to look at even like, you know, phasing potential of more build out um for that plaza between where you would be locating pads and um rework in, again, the entrance ways need work.
Okay, yep, understood.
Landscaping, the pavement is
Yeah.
needs more than striping.
Oh, yeah, we we know. There should have been more detail on the pavement specifically because we absolutely intend to repair everything that needs to be.
And addressing stormwater, is there, you uh, talk with DPW and 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 other professionals regarding, you know, detention-based, anything that would be more conducive um, in in cer- certain portions of the plaza?
Yep, absolutely. We don't want our customers dealing with that flooding either. Absolutely not.
It's like that. It's been going on for many, many, many.
Many years.
I've, yeah, I I've heard and when we did a sidewalk with the previous owner, I think I saw maybe that same picture you were referring to, Paul, with the with the fish. So
Yeah.
we we're aware of the severity and and we're actively trying to trying to solve it.
And it ha- and water has been in that building before um, on the left-hand side, so.
It's like, we'd like to see more commercial space, like as I've mentioned, up by the the roadways and some landscaping. There's those parking spaces that are up by the road that are are never used. And that's the, and that's the Highland.
Joshua, more comment I'd like to make if if plans are gonna be reworked for this project. Uh, I do agree with some of the comments that were made earlier about the appearance of the the entire mall in general, the entire plaza in general, the the building specifically. Uh, during the PowerPoint presentation, uh, you show some very nice-looking structures that were, that were, that were done quite nice. And the one of the comments during that presentation was, we don't just put lipstick on a pit. Well, I have to, I really have to admit, when I saw the actual rendition of this plaza, that's exactly what you did. You put a stripe of red down the building and that's, that's it. If if these planes are gonna be reworked and the it's it's gonna look great for the area, there's gonna be some pretty decent improvements to the facade of that building to really make it look exceptional. It just simply doesn't do it in those renderings. So if something can be done to make the, make the whole appearance of the structure look better, that would go a long way with me anyway.
Un- understood, Peter. Um, and I I appreciate your comments. Not being from the architecture side, I can't speak to why that decision was made. From my understanding of those other developments, they had existing entrances and canopies and things that were kind of reworked. Um, that's, that's my expectation, but you know, if we're, especially if we're going back to the to the drawing board as a word and reworking the concept, I imagine that that front would change drastically if there are retail suites out of there. So we will absolutely work on uh, a more accurate or, you know, upscale representation.
Think of of lan- landscaping and other pieces within the parking parking lot and direct help better direct traffic. It's just one giant open field right now. Things, if you take a look at of of um other plazas, there's been investment in like the Twin Cities Plaza overhaul. A lot of work's been done there, um, reinvestment.
In terms of islands being put into the middle of the parking lots I refer to?
And the, and the facades.
Okay.
So there's been a a lot of in in our nearby community, um, also, um, even further down the end of John Fitch Highway. Um, developers been reworking some of the um, um, reinvesting in the plazas and doing all the fa- doing a facelift sand with the parking lots and adding a more aesthetic appeal. Regards, but the landscape thing also helps with stormwater.
Yep, absolutely.
Aspects. So, you know, we agreed, and it's like everybody agrees that like this has been a long time in coming.
Yep, un- understood.
With the old concept of here's the building and here's a parking lot. And
Right.
what what can be done in order to improve this and make it a of many amenities for the the citizens um, in the city. Um, because it is, I, you know, we appreciate the investment. We certainly do. And it's like, we're excited that someone's coming in to invest in the community and um we want to make sure that it's uh, meets, you know, the expectations. And it's not people saying it's, well, it's Pittsburgh. That's what's expected. We're expecting a lot more.
Yep, we we can appreciate that and and appreciate all of your um, honesty and and comments here. We'll, we'll take it to heart and um, come back to you hopefully with a more appealing concept.
Great, thank you. It's, we'd love to work with you.
We try, we try to be.
All the same goal in mind and want it to be successful.
Yes, absolutely. We want to be as collaborative and and transparent as 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 possible. We don't just put up a development and leave. We we feel that we are members of the community. We are there to stay. And so we want to be good neighbors and good members of the community.
Appreciate that.
Are we ready to continue?
Any other, any other feedback? For the applicants?
There's no other hands raised.
Okay, and we can continue this to our our next meeting, um, if you want to continue it to March or April, if you'd like, whichever.
Josh, do you think you'll, you'll have enough time to to do what you need to do by our March meeting, which is the fourth Tuesday in March?
Um, yes, I believe so. Um, I don't think that'll be a problem. If it is, we can always reach out, but I I don't think it will be.
Okay.
Uh, whatever, just so you know, whatever application materials, whatever revisions, um, they should be to us fourteen days before the meeting. So that's about two weeks from now.
Understood.
We have to give.
Maybe, maybe three weeks from now. I I can't, I can't really keep track of the calendar.
We just want to make sure the the departments get the review time that they need as well.
Of course. So that that fourth Tuesday is the twenty-eighth, so we need to have materials to you by the fourteenth, or sorry, February.
Yeah, so that way we can make sure we know if we, if we need to put it on our agenda. So if by the fourteenth you don't have it, let Community Development know and um, we can, you know, we certainly certainly can move you to April if you need to. I just, this one's not that big a deal because there, I don't think there are residential abutters um, that are here. There might be, but um, it's not like it's a direct residential neighborhood, so we have to worry about people showing up and no applicant here. So a little more flexibility with your project.
And and, yeah, feel free to reach out if you have any questions.
Understood, we absolutely will.
It's like, uh, we like to work, we like to work with folks.
We appreciate that. Thank you.
Make a motion to continue till March.
Uh, motion's been made. Is there a second? Second.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed.
So that's March, that is March twenty-eighth.
Okay. March twenty-eighth.
Thank you, Josh. I'll I'll catch up on everything I missed. My apologies again.
No, no problem. I'm glad you were able to uh, find your dog. That's scary. I know how it goes.
Thank you. My wife was panicked. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you all for your time and I look forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, one second. We have our next hearing this evening. We have a special permit and site plan review for Speedy Cannabis, Marijuana Delivery Operator and Marijuana Courier Establishment at three three-nine River Street.
I know Phil's here. I can see, Attorney Silverman, you must be here for this, right? I unmuted you.
Okay, can you, oh, great. Um, just gotta try to, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. So do you want me to put something up on the screen or do you?
No, I can do that, but for some reason I can't seem to, I don't have the way to put my camera on.
Well, that, we're gonna change that right now.
Ah, there we go.
I had to make you a panelist first. So now you should have camera and you should have screen control. You can hit share screen and then pick what screen you want to share and go from there. And we see you. Good, good.
Perfect. All right, wonderful. Thank you.
Excellent.
Uh, okay, uh, Phil Silverman, I'm here from a law firm of Vicente LLP. Um, and my client is here as well. Sam Gander is the manager. I believe he's on uh, probably somewhere.
Yeah, he is. Just let me know at any point if you need us to unmute him.
Okay, I, for now, I think we're okay, but if if we have questions. Um, so the company is called Speedy Cannabis. This is a marijuana delivery company uh, that's looking to operate a business at three thirty-nine River Street. The applicant is a social equity applicant in the state's Cannabis Control Commission um, uh, business model. That's the only type of applicant that's allowed to run this type of uh, operation. Just a little background on that. Uh, Massachusetts law changed about two years ago. Uh, you're probably aware, this was an industry that was supposed to allow persons that were disproportionately impacted by the war on drugs and also other uh, people of need to participate. Unfortunately, that wasn't happening the way the rollout of the industry was in Massachusetts. And so the legislature decided that when they created these new delivery companies, they were gonna restrict uh, participation in those types of licenses only to social equity applicants and economic empowerment applicants for three years. Give them a bit of a head start uh, in operating these types of businesses. And so um, so that that came about and then uh, within the last six months, I think, uh, the city uh, had some zoning that I think you may recall, we were in front of you uh, working on. And so now this has been zoned, uh, and so here we are. Um, and and what we have is, there's two different types of businesses. Uh, and this applicant is actually gonna be seeking to do both. One is called a delivery courier business. What that is, it's kind of like the the Uber Eats model. Um, a a retailer will call the uh, delivery company and say, hey, we've got somebody we want to do a delivery to. And then so this this company would send a transport vehicle over to the retailer, pick up the product, uh, deliver it to the consumer. Um, and the other type of operator uh, is called the delivery operator model. And basically, the 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 operator would uh, purchase its own marijuana products, store them in a vault at the facility. Uh, and then it would, you know, have a website and people, you know, would be able to order things from that website. It would be loaded into the vehicles, taken out to the consumers again. Um, so that's, that's the delivery operator. Both, both types uh, of of business would be operated uh, at this facility.
Would they be repackaging, just to clarify?
No, no, no packaging. It's, it's all uh, just purchased packaged from the wholesaler.
Okay.
Okay. Um, this is a a relatively low-impact business, I think, compared to the rest of what you've seen uh, in 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 terms of, you know, cultivators, obviously, lots of employees, uh, some potentially significant uh, you know, issues, odor, that sort of thing. Um, none of that here. Retail, obviously, a lot of customers. No customers uh, ever come to this facility. Really, what you're gonna see here at the beginning of this business is pretty simple. Three employees. Uh, you would have uh, one in in the facility doing dispatch and packaging orders and then two uh, individuals who go out in a van. And I think that's what you'll see. You'll see this uh, business start with one van. Um, and so, you know, again, what you have is employees are gonna come in in the morning. Uh, they'll leave at night and in between, um, your delivery vehicle is generally loaded in the morning. Uh, at the beginning, it will probably, you know, go out all day, finish its orders and then return at night. If uh, a- as business ramps up, you might see that vehicle go out, come back midday, load a second order, uh, or a number of orders, and then go out and deliver those in the afternoon. So it's kind of a a minimal number of vehicle trips to and from the site. I would estimate certainly at the beginning between six to eight, coming in six to eight, leaving something.
Is it a dedicated vehicle?
It is.
Personal vehicle?
It is a dedicated vehicle Cannabis Control Commission. You know, that that's a requisite. There's there's all sorts of restrictions on what that vehicle needs to be able to do in terms of have a locked storage compartment where the product is um, and and all sorts of community. I'll get it a little bit. Well, it's a good time to probably talk a little bit about security just so we understand that piece of it. And and we did send the plans over to the security plans to the police department, who's been very generous with their time and in giving us commentary. You'll you'll see the same cameras that you're used to seeing at all of these other businesses that you've seen. Cameras, you know, all the exterior of the facility, so we can see all around the facility. See everybody that's coming and going in the area and in the interior in every room where marijuana is handled or stores. You've got cameras, the same alarms that you're used to seeing, access controls that you're used to seeing. That's all governed by Cannabis Control Commission and obviously has been very strict over time and quite frankly, very successful over time also because we haven't seen a significant number of, you know, public of public safety issues at any of these places. In in terms of the delivery itself, two people in the vehicle doing the deliveries. There's always got to be one that stays in the vehicle at all times. You know, for example, when the delivery happens, only one person leaves the vehicle. The other stays in the vehicle. All of the personnel have body cameras on them. And the vehicles are GPS tracked at all times. And there's always secure communications with the dispatch office at all times during these deliveries. Just a couple of other pieces on the delivery on the security front. Can't deliver to college dormitories. That's outlawed. That this is really only for residential deliveries. However, any federal housing can't deliver there either because of the federally illegality. All of the customers, by the way, are also pre-verified. So anybody that's looking to purchase product, for example, from the, you know, the delivery operator side of this that I mentioned, they have to pre-register with their ID so that that can be checked first. And again, when the delivery actually happens at the customer's home, that ID is going to be checked again at that time. All right, now I'll I'll I'm going to try to share my screen and sort of go through some of the details. And let's see, let me think. Did that do it? Are you able? Are you able to see the site plan here?
Yes.
Fantastic. Okay. So again, this is three thirty nine River Street. This is this this business is sharing that building that's sort of on the left-hand side of the site with an operating service station. It uses there's two bays that will remain with the service station. And this is on the right-hand side of that building where it will operate. There are nine parking spaces here to the side. We believe seven are required. You've got to have for the service station, you've got to have four spaces, two for each service bay. And then for the marijuana establishment, you've got to have an adequate number for employees, which we think is going to be three, could be four. So it's either seven or eight, but in any event, there's nine parking spaces.
Can I can I ask you, since we're on that topic, because I had a question, the first thing I thought about was do they do any car sales whatsoever there?
I don't believe that there's car sales at the service station.
Because it because if we permit this, one of the conditions will have to be they can't sell cars because you're going to be taking all all the spaces up for what's required for the service station and what's required for employees.
All right. You know what? Let's let's.
We can table that for we can table that for now.
Okay.
Thought it's a thought that 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 came to my mind. I asked that I asked the building inspector to look into if nowadays, when you get a license to sell cars, they they license how many you can have on site. I I couldn't find record of that for this property. So I I believe I was told they could, but obviously you can't if you don't have the spaces and you guys are using the spaces for everything else. So if they move forward, they won't be able to sell cars at this location.
Okay. Understood. When when I'm done with the presentation, maybe we'll we'll unmute Mr. Gander. He can he can speak to that issue on the sales, just so we'll clarify that for you.
Yep.
Okay. Down now. All right. So this gives you maybe a little a little clearer look at the actual operation itself. And so you can see on the right-hand side of the building, you've got you've got a a vault here where the product I mentioned will be stored. You've got an area of space here where there's you know, the the orders are taken. It's sort of a dispatch room. And any orders are also prepared in that area. You know, they packaged, you know. The product itself is packaged. I'm talking about putting it all in a bag or something that goes into the delivery vehicle. That that happens in the room as well. And then the product, when it's ready to be loaded, it comes out this door right to the right here of the of the front of the building. And the area just to the right of that is there's a fence that we're putting up around that. So we're going to create a secure fenced area. And in the front of that is a retractable fence. So when we do delivery, when we do the loading, the the vehicle pulls in, the retractable fence is pulled shut. So you have a secure area there where the actual loading takes place. I will tell you, under the CCC rules, you don't have to do that. But I know that, you know, there's a concern, I think, at the police department with there's some concerns about security here. And so we felt that this was the best way to secure it. So you'll see you know, the fence behind it, the fence going all the way to the side. And again, the retractable fence so that we can pull in for for loading. And loading is a fairly i- it's really a very quick process. The way it's done here literally takes two or three minutes. Once we pull in to have the product taken out and loaded into the vehicle.
How does that? How does the use of that dumpster work with a locked gate?
It's not ninety-nine percent of the time that gate's not locked.
So it's only locked when you're loading?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. So again, you you can see you know, the 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 layout here. By the way, that vault is a it's a bit hardened in the sense that there's mesh that's put into the walls. So the idea behind security at this facility is this this facility is monitored after hours with, you know, an individual who is actually watching if there's somebody that approaches the facility. We're immediately going to be contacting the local authorities, but if that person tries to get into the building, they're going to have to get through several doors in the building and then they're going to have to get through that mesh. And the idea is that, you know, could somebody get through there? Yeah, after some period of time they could, but the local authorities are going to be there well in advance. This is pretty standard for the way all of your marijuana facilities work. Everything is in a vault that is designed to take a significant significant amount of time to get through for anybody that's got some kind of criminal intent here. I just I I we did speak to both Chief Martino and Captain Lemay about this. I know there were some concerns here. I I should mention the plan you're looking at was not the original floor plan that was filed. I I did supplement it yesterday after we got additional comments from the police. You know, the the most there were a couple of significant things. One was at one point, we were going to share the bathrooms between the service station and this business. They didn't like that. We got it. So they now had each business has its own bathroom. There's no sharing of the space here. I know also that there have been some alarms that have been set off over the years at this facility. I my understanding is, you know, last year there were four alarms that were set off. I don't think there've been any this year. We our understanding was that there was a rodent problem, which was what was causing those alarms. We think we've taken care of that. So we don't think there's going to be any kind of an issue with that anymore. It's also a bit of a concern, I think, about this area behind the building, which I guess there's some railroad tracks back there. And I know the chief was concerned. You know, that that individuals might be might seek to try to sort of access this property from the rear. So there's a couple of things that we did about that. The first thing you'll see is around the building itself, we've put up a barbed wire fence that goes all the way around to the rear to make sure that people cannot access, get onto the roof, because I guess there's a hill behind here. And so we wanted to make sure that people wouldn't be able to do that. But to the extent that, for example, somebody is trying, you know, wants to try to get into this during the day, I I would suggest to you that's highly unlikely because you know, the the time we'd be most concerned with that is when we're actually loading for a delivery. And we are, we've sent the surveillance camera plans to the police. There are cameras which look up at that hill. Obviously, the first thing we're going to do when we're preparing a loading is we're going to have somebody you know, viewing those cameras, making sure there isn't anybody back there. If there was, obviously, we'd be looking to get the local authorities involved because there would be a concern. But we believe that we're going to be able to, you know, cut off any any possible attempt like that from behind the building through those cameras. And also, as I mentioned, the barbed wire fence back here should keep keep people off the roof. One way or another, however, I would also mention if somebody did manage to get on the roof, the chief asked us to to have what's called a, I think it's a seismic detector, which means that if somebody's trying to get in and and enter through the roof of the building, the seismic detector is going to is going to get the shaking from that, I guess, is how it works. I'm not a security expert. But the idea would be to make sure that nobody can access the building through the roof. The the roof over the vault is also protected by that mesh that I mentioned before. Just so so there's some confidence that even if they tried to access through the roof, that's going to take a lot of time. And again, the local authorities will be notified. So that's really, you know, the outlines of the plan. We're happy to answer answer any other questions you have, but but I thought we'd stay brief here and because a lot of it's very similar to what you've seen already in other businesses other than the actual delivery part. So happy to answer any questions.
Well, thank you, Phil, for your presentation. Very well done. I want to questions.
Sure.
Well, I reading through the application too. It's like no other site changes. And when you're changing and adding additional use like this, we're looking at the parking lot, looking at the building, we're looking at landscaping aspects of that. That curb cut is way too wide. It doesn't conform to the current standards for safety. In that regard, so we have to be reconfigured. Working DPW on that. It's right at an intersection at the roundabout. There's also, I would say myself, but get some issues with the concurrent businesses there. With the gasoline pumps as well as the garage, because you could be using the garage space for, you know, pulling in the car in that aspect. I am not fond of having any chain link outside of the building. It's a commercial district. And I wanted to look aesthetically nice. This is very highly visible location.
Yep.
And we're I think we're expecting a lot more to be done with the aesthetics there. I don't want to see even the barbed wire fence being put on for the the roof to, you know, looking at like a compound per se. It's like it it's I'm just saying those are some of the, you know, in the first issues that I have. With that, because it's like you could use those garage bays for the actual delivery aspect. I think it's a lot too much activity going on to the site and putting this activity with it. We previously approved, I think it was like Stock and Beans up the road in Westminster Street, and they had similarly, they had like two bays where cars pull in. They had the also with an office to the side for the transporter type of business.
Sure.
Just saying, so those might my some initial pieces I toss out there.
So I wanted to, if if I can touch on one of the issues first about the curb cuts, the this is a good picture to sort of demonstrate, I think, what we're talking about. I I'm not sure where you would put a curb here. So for example, you know, if there was a thought that you would put it in this area that we're looking at right here up to that utility pole, I would think that would be a huge mistake. Because the cars are coming out from the street and a lot of them are going to pull in here. If you restrict that, what you may happen is if you have more than one car at the gas station at the gas pumps there, if there's two, you're going to make it hard for somebody to pull in around that utility pole and they're going to potentially congest traffic. So I'm not sure that would be the best idea.
Well, that's working with DPW and traffic and and consult regarding that. But again,
Okay.
That's the other the other point of too many uses on the site. You shouldn't have the gas pumps if you're doing this type of a business. It's my my thought. Okay.
Maybe I mean, maybe maybe the alternative is you you have you leave, you know, a small access point here for exit. You have curving that comes from here down to here, and then you have a normal curb cut of whatever whatever, you know, is determined to be normal, twenty-four feet or whatever it ends up being in here. You know, that way you have site circulation in and out. I mean, no matter what this use is, we would have that comment that that you can't have an open curb like that.
Well.
Even even where you have a scenario where there's really just this piece of curb. That's really the only thing there. That that there's there needs to be more curb there. There needs to be more separation to define what's the entrance, what's the exit, what's the site?
I I would only suggest to you that and and maybe we can't open up the view here, but there's a rotary here and cars are going to come off that rotary into the station. And if you close up what you're suggesting beyond that pole, which it sounds like you want to do, you're going to make it very hard for people coming off that rotary to get in here. They're going to basically have to cut across that road.
You might be right. You might be right. And that wasn't a definitive. I I'm not an engineer. That wasn't a definitive. That was a maybe that's the way to do it, but maybe you're right. Maybe.
Yeah, wait, listen, we we'll talk. We 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 plan on talking to DPW further about that. I get that. It it as far as, you know, the concern with the uses, I understand you. You know, you you would prefer to have sort of a single use here. While I get that, I I think the the use by this particular delivery business is so minimal. Again, I think it's probably six to eight trips in and six to eight trips out a day. That just strikes me as a pretty minimal. I think right now at the gas station, you're seeing maybe a hundred and eighty customers a day. As a percentage of what you've got already going on, it's it's quite minimal. So I understand the concern, but you know, this is again, it's not easy for social equity applicants to find great locations all over the place. We we think this is you know, actually pretty well located to be able to get out and do deliveries. And so we've tried to make it work. We you know, we're we're happy to listen to further suggestions to deep from DPW.
Regardless regardless of what, you know, you know, what ends up happening, I want you to know that at least me personally, I'm I'm very much in favor and hope that he that he works out wherever he wherever it ends up working out, whether it's here or somewhere else. This site has a lot of challenges and that's all you'll you'll hear about them as we go through this, but this site in particular has a lot of challenges.
Understood, understood. Yeah.
Phil, I think you're gonna you're gonna hear from a a number of the board members that it's it's a tough sell to be running two businesses out of such a congested little station. I think you're going to be hearing that continually as time goes by. It is a tough site. However, it would make a great site for the one business. For the delivery business, and I think it's perfect for that business. However, that said, I do agree with the chair that even for that business, is there would have to be substantial improvements to the appearance and the looks of the building. So that there are there are a lot of challenges to be met here, but I would be leaning more in favor of one business at the site with improvements to the building.
Understood.
Paul, Tracy and Nick all have their hands raised.
Go ahead, Tracy.
I I agree. I think there's definitely too many businesses. One question, do they still do state inspections at that facility?
Do. Maybe we could unmute Mr. Gander just so he can answer that question as as well as the other regarding car sales.
That's just that's just another added. You know, more cars in and out.
Paul, are you okay with that?
Yes, yep, yep.
Mr. Gander, you are unmuted. Just hit the mute button. And for the other people that have their hands raised, I'm aware. I see them. I will get to everyone.
We still do car inspections there and I just want to clarify, you know, I mean, we we live up the street of Madison. We've we've had this location for twenty years. And Um, and, um. What we're trying to do is we're trying to save money so we can, you know, get. We don't plan to, to have, you know, the whole business, two businesses from that location a long time. And the reason we, we're doing this is because it's, you know, we, we don't have the money to go rent a location and, and, and spend, you know, half a million bucks. Uh, you know, building it out and then the business fails. If this business goes, then we're gonna turn the whole thing into one business. And if it fails, we're just gonna go back to how it was before. That's our honest to goodness plan. We have a little bit of money.
Are you the property owner?
Uh, my wife is, yeah.
Okay, cause I saw a different name on the tax client search.
That's my wife, yeah.
Okay, okay. I was, no problem. I was just, I was curious.
Could you clarify if there are any auto sales being conducted?
No, 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 we haven't sold cars there for years.
So you would be fine with a perfect condition that you cannot sell cars in that site?
Correct, yes. That's, I appreciate guys, I really do. And we will do our best, but. We're a local couple, you know, that are trying to kind of make this place. Work and hire, you know, I mean, we're trying to make it really. This isn't. The car business, the, the auto business is hard. I'm, I'm old. I can't do this forever, you know? And we're just looking for another supplement our income and finish our four kids in college, you know?
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Yep.
And, uh, Nick has his hand raised.
Yep.
Nick Erickson, uh, DPW commissioner.
Thanks Paula. I just wanted to, uh, make sure the applicant and I were on the same page. So happy to discuss further offline. Um, about the comments regarding, uh, closing up the curb cuts and whatnot. Typically, what, what we recommend is that, you know, you hire a traffic engineer that takes a look at. The traffic situation because this is so close to the roundabout. Um, there's a lot of, lot of cars coming in, a lot of cars going out. Um, I, I really think a traffic engineer should kind of take a look at the traffic patterns and. And recommend where it makes sense to put those, those revised curb cuts. Um, like, like was mentioned previously, it's kind of a, a free for all right now with, with just. Basically almost the entire frontage just wide open for, for cars to drive in and out. Um. And I, 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 I realized that the intent is to kind of get this up and running as, as cheaply as possible. So, um. I don't think it needs a, a full blown, like, traffic impact analysis, but, um, I think it could use a, a traffic engineer taking a look at the site. And just making a few, um, you know, good, good recommendations based on some engineering judgment.
Okay.
That's it. Thank you.
Thanks Nick. Uh, we also have, uh, Chief Martino and Captain Lemay who, who have their hands raised.
Okay.
Um, I suppose I'll start with the captain. I'm chief, I'm sorry, with chief.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good evening Paula. Uh, good evening planning board. Uh, thank you for this opportunity to speak this evening. As, as you're well aware, um. The city of Pittsburgh and the police department has worked diligently with all the different cannabis vendors that have come into the city over the past several years. Um, I have designated Captain Lemay to be my sole point of contact with all cannabis industries coming into the city. And to make sure that their security plans fall in line with the CCC guidelines and we try to make sure that. The businesses that are coming in are gonna operate in a safe and effective manner, especially as it relates to any type of diversion or theft of the product. And I think we've been pretty successful on that perspective. Um, I'm gonna continue having Captain Lemay be the point of contact. However, I thought it was important that I come here this evening. And address, uh, the board, uh, before the captain has, uh, his conversation on, on our thoughts. Um, I, I have my opinions on this business model. However, I don't think it's. Uh, pertinent to express those views to this board. We're here to discuss this location and this location only. Um, I have significant concerns about this location. Um, the amount of times. My police department has responded to this location for a whole host of reasons. Uh, much more than just four alarm calls. Where, where we responded to a significant amount of. Calls for police services, criminal services. Um, there's a lot going on at this location. Um, we've had some very. Well, uh, the thought out conversations with Attorney Silverman regarding this location. I, I appreciate the conversations we had with him. I made it clear to him that, that I was not gonna be supportive of this business model. Where it retains the service station, uh, the, the two garage bays. I just think it's too much for there. Um, he did graciously, uh, change the plans twice on recommendations that we made. Um, when, this, this was the first time, well, today, when I reviewed the, the, the plans, when I. Saw a barbed wire fence, the first thing I thought was, oh, oh my God, that's gonna look horrible up there. But that was one of the recommendations that I made that. I had concerns coming off of the railroad shacks behind the building. Um, we've gone through all different scenarios, why we have concerns about this location. Um, I thought it was important tonight that I, I at least stressed the board, to say to the board that I do not support this plan. I told the attorney. Um, that I would be much more, uh. Approachable to this design if this was a sole use for, for a cannabis, uh, delivery business there. Eliminating the other business models that are in the building. Uh, we've had great success, no issues with the cannabis company, the healing place across the street. Uh, but I just think there's way too much going on at this location. And based on our cost of service, I think it's just gonna. Expand what, what is happening over there. So at this point, I'm gonna turn this over to Captain Lemay, who will continue being our point. Uh, on cannabis related matters to the, uh, the planning board, but I thank you for this opportunity to, uh, speak to the board this evening.
Thank you, chief.
Oh, uh, unmute, uh, Captain Lemay, you're all set whenever you're ready. Nope, sorry, that might have been my fault. Now, now you should be okay. Sorry, sorry.
Okay, thank you, um, ladies and gentlemen. I, I don't wanna, um. Go into too much detail. Chief Martino explained, uh, some things very well. Uh, but I do wanna talk about. Uh, the calls for service, uh, that have been associated with this particular establishment, um, as it's existing business. I think that Attorney Silverman minimized, um, the calls for service. For the last year, uh, we, we've responded to a variety of different calls. Um. On average, we're averaging over sixty-three times a year for, over the last four years that we've had to respond to this business. Uh, for a variety of different things. And most recently last year. Was twelve different false alarms or types of alarms at that building. Um, that raises a concern from the, for the police department. A, as you know, alarms are, are, we respond to throughout the city. Uh, various locations, but this particular establishment, when you have a mixed use building, we're not gonna know. Uh, the nature of what type of alarm we're going to there, whether it's for the marijuana place or the service station next door, which couples. That creates, uh, some obstacles for our officers responding. Um, I have a concern with that, um, a, as we deal with this particular establishment. Um. We have, with the mixed use building, we're not gonna know if we're dealing with a disturbance call. At the gas station or a disturbance call, um, at the marijuana facility because of the, the way the site is laid out. And as you know, we have to report all those disturbances to the CCC, um, which could create some challenges with, uh. You know, which one is responsible for what particular area of concern. Um, I just have some concerns with the, the volume of calls that we've had there. Um, I, I appreciate the fact that the applicant's been, um, so. Understanding with our request with changing the plans and changing the way the bathroom setup was. Because having a shared bathroom, I, I looked at that as being extremely complicated. Uh, but just the fact that it's a mixed use buil-, uh, business creates some concern, uh, from the police department's perspective.
Thank you, Captain.
We have, um, uh, Councilman Hasen has his hand raised.
Counselor?
Good evening. Thank you very much for, uh, for giving me comments on this. And, um. I guess just to start with, this is a really difficult site, even just for its use as a, a, a gas station. Um, being, it's positioned right on the rotary, it's long frontage and relatively narrow depth. Um, that there are issues about how cars can enter the site just to queue for the, the gas pumps. And also, um, cars that are, are queuing for the inspection, where, where, where are they lining up and then. On this relatively tight site. And the idea of introducing this delivery use, uh, just seems impossible to manage. I have a lot of. Concerns about this. Um, I am, I was glad to see the, on the plan, the closed loading area. Cause I know that something that was required, I had previously, uh. Approved a different type of delivery carrier, um, down the street on River Street on a property. Um, but if you notice, um, that secure area backs directly into the gas pumps. Um, so if cars are all lined up, it's, it's gonna be very difficult for cars to get in and out. And I, I know, uh, Mr. Silverman, um, minimized the number of trips that we're expected to, to make these. Delivery cars are expected to make, but I think you really have to plan for the cars coming in and out over the course of the day. Um, cause this is a comedian's business, that people will order and, and expect to get delivered. Relatively quickly. To be successful has to, to be a quick response. Um, and this is something we could follow up, but I don't think this is something that you order a day ahead of time. Um, so it, it just seems very hard to make all of these uses work on the same, that's like. It's just difficult to one use, other than these three uses. Um, so I would really caution the board. And I would make a note that the city's been very welcoming to the cannabis industry. We haven't been afraid of it. Um, we've, you know. Yeah, all, all companies, it really, uh, found a way to make it work. And we've already always taken the time to make sure it's a good project. Um. And I'm, I'm not sure this is, I think this really seems to be kind of shorn into something that it really shouldn't be. And, um, I know the chief has his concerns about this use. I'm a little more comfortable with it. But I, I think it, it would, if this was just that use, it, this could be workable. But to, to try and do all this at once on a very difficult site, I would really caution the board. I think this could cause a lot of problems. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else in the public forum, uh, raise your hand?
Chief, I'm gonna lower your hand, cause I think it was from before. If that was a new comment, just raise your, there we go. We must have a new comment. Got you. Do you have a new comment?
Yeah, of course, I was still muted. Um, and, and it, our camera's supposed to be off, Paul?
Um. Yeah, so, so do you want your camera on? I can make you a panelist.
I, no, 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 I, it's, it's just seems like all the speakers, their, their cameras were off and. Sometimes in our business, you, you get a good idea when someone's speaking, you, you, you see their expressions on their face. But I just wanna make one quick comment. You know, we've been very proactive in the city of Pittsburgh when it comes to the cannabis industry, extremely. We've been welcoming, inviting, uh, we've been transparent with the industry. Uh, I'm the first to admit, seven years ago, I, I was very adamant against the cannabis industry coming in. You know, I, I, I've changed my tune, for lack of better terms. Uh, over this past several years, because I've seen some really responsible business owners come into the city. And really make investments in their property, um, whether it's manufacturing buildings or, or, or the rec, or the, uh. The, uh, the sales of cannabis in the city. As I said, I, I, I do have concerns about this business model, but that's not a conversation for this panel. Um, this business is just too many things are happening here at one point. Way too many things. You're gonna have someone pulling in for gasoline. You're gonna have someone pulling in to have their car inspected. And all, all at the same time, you're gonna have someone having a brake job done on their car. And while this is happening, we're gonna be loading possibly up to five thousand dollars worth of cannabis into a van. Can you see that many moving parts? Something's gonna go wrong. Now, I, I made it very clear to Attorney Silverman, i- if this was a single use. Occup, oc, oc, occupation here, we would have a much different, different perspective on this location. But. Would my office is having to respond to this location? Are we gonna be responding for theft of gas? Uh, 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 an angry patron over at the inspection station? Or someone that didn't have their brake job done correctly? There's way too many moving parts. And in the cannabis industry. We, we have a lot to do to protect not only the consumer, but I have to protect. Diversion of people that are underage and, and most importantly, the theft of the product. Um, so there's a lot of things happening. This location, if approved in this manner. Will create an undue burden on the Pittsburgh Police Department. And I have concerns about that. So, that being said, I yield the floor. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else in the public forum? Are there any, uh, board members have any, um, questions or comments? Regarding the application in front of us at this time?
No, I mean, I suppose, and, and I think you were gonna go here, Paul. I suppose my next question is, does the applicant wanna? Uh, revisit some of the things we talked about, or, you know, I, 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 I have. You know, I would have a very hard time voting in an affirmative for something that particularly, um, our police chief, uh, has an issue with. And, and the other, um, issues that were brought up tonight. Um, I would have a very hard time voting the affirmative. So I, I don't know if the applicant wants to take time to look at the alternatives. Um, I think that the, I think that the appropriate solution is creating one use at this building, if that's what the applicant wants to do. And go from there. And, you know, you, you, you might have a, a, a much more viable. Um, less intrusive business if that were the case.
So, uh, yeah, if we could, uh, continue. Uh, you know, you've, you've raised a lot of good issues. And I will say. You know, I, I have nothing but great respect for the board who I've worked with on many of these projects so far. And I think I always get a fair shake and. Uh, you know, a lot of helpful commentary. So I wanna sit down with my client. You know, sort of work through some of the issues that have been raised. And, uh, if, if we can continue to March twenty-eighth, uh, if, if that's enough time. If it's not, obviously we'll get in touch with you. And, but we have to obviously assess what we're doing here in light of the comments.
Thank you. And Alex had a, had, had a comment.
Hi, everyone. Um, yeah, I agree with, uh, Chief Martino and Captain Lemay. Um. I'm all for the cannabis, uh, industry being in Pittsburgh. It generates a lot of revenue. I love the idea of the delivery portion of things. My concern is the same concerns that the police department have. And the way it is set laid out now, I, I wouldn't be able to vote for it.
Okay. So, um. Mr. Silverman, do you have enough feedback from the board at this time?
I think we do.
Okay.
Make a motion to continue.
Thank you guys. Appreciate it. Uh, we'll take that into consideration. And I appreciate really your support. I'm, I'm very happy. And, uh. I kinda agree with the chief and everybody. We tried to save some money on rental income, you know, on business income while we run this business. Um, this is what I expected, honestly. You know, it is a lot. Uh, but our, our, our option was to kind of make money while this business builds, you know, and then turn it over into one business. That was our, our idea. Uh, we're gonna lose, uh, if we close the garage and the inspection. Um, you know, that's also fine, but I don't think this business is gonna generate a lot of income for the first year or two maybe. So I'm not really sure if we're gonna be able to survive honestly with, with, with very little income coming in from the delivery with one car. You know?
But let's reassess Sam and we'll, you know, let's, let's continue and then we can talk and.
Thank you guys. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Right, motion to continue to our March meeting.
Motion with the second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? All right, we'll see you in March.
Thank you, Attorney Silverman.
Thank you all.
Good luck.
A lot of notes, let's see. Uh, we have a last public hearing this evening, at least on this page of my agenda. We have special permit and site plan review for Tossi conversion to four residential units in the second and third floor at two ninety-eight Main Street. And one of our members would just needs to recuse himself from, uh, the vote.
Yeah, I'll be recusing myself from this.
All right. Mr. Tossi, are you here?
Yes, hold on one second. Let me, uh, yep. So Paul, you've been unmuted, so just click the mute button and you, you should be good.
Fantastic. Thank you so much, Paul. And, and how do I get the, uh, the camera working?
I would, I will move you right over and you can do whatever you need to do. And you should be able to get your camera up and working as soon as it sends you over. Um, you can also control the screen if you want, or if you would just wanna tell me what you'd like up, I can do that too, whatever is easier for you.
Okay, great. Looks like we're, we're on now. So, um. Good evening, everyone. Uh, thank you so much for having us tonight. Um, I'm joined by Alex Dillon, um, our head of construction. My name is Paul Tossi. Uh, we're seeking a, a special permit approval, uh, to turn the second and third floor of two ninety-eight to three hundred Main Street. Uh, into four residential apartments. Um, we're, you know, essentially seeking a, a waiver for the density, um, and zoning jurisdiction that says we have to have an, a, a buffer. Fifty-foot offset buffer.
Um, and zoning jurisdiction that says we have to have a a buffer, fifty-foot offset buffer, um, for this project, project. Ultimately, we're not changing anything to the building on the exterior besides restoring the historic nature of it, trying to bring it back to. The beautiful building that it is on the outside, um, sanding and finishing the wood on the storefront, restoring the paints. Um, and making sure that the building is brought back to life. Um, there's no change to the. Uh, exterior of the site. If you go to the the site plan itself, um, really, it's just the building taking up, uh, the entire. Uh, site there. Uh, this is the looks plan that works great.
Um, which one do you want, Paul?
Uh, site plan i- is great, Paul, if that works, or look as planned, either one.
Oh, no, that's the application. Hold on, I'll get, I'll get it eventually. There's a bunch of things here. That's the wrong one. Uh, that's the wrong one.
I think it's the top one there, maybe potentially, Paul, that, uh, that that site plan right there, two ninety eight Main Plan.
No, that's that's what brought up this.
The site plan, that that works, that that's fine, that's really, yeah, so this is the site plan for the building right here. Um, so as you can see, it's an existing building. We're not changing the height in any way. We're not altering the building. Um, ultimately, we're putting four residential apartments on the on the second and third floor. You can, you can really stop sharing the the site plan now, Paul, and, uh, we can be pretty, pretty brief on the next part. Um, when it comes to parking, we recognize that, uh, those front spaces are exclusively for the commercial patrons of Main Street, so we recognize that. Uh, residents are not gonna be parking in those spaces. We're gonna have conversations about that. We worked with the treasurer's office to to think through different permanent parking options nearby within walking distance. Um, trash is gonna be stored in the basement of this building. Um, we're also gonna have plenty of bike storage, uh, there in the basement. Um, and ultimately, our our goal is to bring in a great commercial tenant, uh, there on the storefront of the Main Street. This project, if approved tonight. Would allow us to really lower the rents, uh, and and bring in an excellent tenant there on Main Street. Um, and we've worked with DPW to get their comments ahead of of this meeting, um, and are prepared to meet all the requirements that they've asked us. Um, so, uh, really, you know, that that's the, that's the overview and and happy to answer any questions that, uh, the board might have for this this project.
Thank you, Mr. Tasi. Could you, uh, on the rear elevation, uh, what improvements are you gonna make on the Boulder Drive side to the building?
Excellent. Yeah, thank you, Paul. So, um, first and foremost, I think everyone can see that we certainly need to restore the fire escape. Um, we're planning on making sure that all the hardware is updated, that it's sanded, painted. Um, additionally, you know, any of the facade requirements, certainly the landscape look and feel there, uh, you can see that there's overgrown weeds. So we're gonna make sure that the the project looks, the building looks, uh, substantially better. We're gonna paint the entire. Entirety of the building, uh, on all four sides, um, clean the windows and and make sure that. Uh, the building has security camera in the rear as well as, um, you know, proper lighting, uh, in the front and and rear.
Are you gonna do something with the boarded up, like door windows in the back?
De- definitely, yeah, we'll we'll make sure to take care of that, um, and and, uh, you know, pending any board recommendations there, we happy to. Um, really, our goal is to is to bring this building back to life. Clearly needs work there on the facade. Um, and, you know, and I can defer to Alex there too, uh, from a construction standpoint, Alex, I don't know if you have any ideas there for the.
I can unmute him. Alex, you're available to talk to, so you can jump in and out once you hit your the microphone button.
Paul, did I, did I hear you correctly that you were gonna paint the, uh, even the brick for side of the building?
So, um, you know, ultimately, um, we're trying to restore the the historic bill. I'm gonna punt to Alex on paint, um, cause I. Alex, are you there? Can you can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Great.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, we're not gonna paint any brick. We, I love the way brick looks and it's all unique in its own, its own right, so. We are gonna clean it. Anything that's broken is gonna be cleaned.
Well, I thought I heard Paul say that he was gonna paint all four sides of the building.
Yeah, no, we're, we are gonna try to make the, uh, front, uh, or the back match the front with colors. The the back is very plain, nobody ever sees it, but I'd like it to match, so. So we like the greens, we like browns, uh, we like the natural wood that's on the front. I think we'd like to keep it that way and just refresh the same colors. And then back, we'd like to do the back the exact same way.
Yeah, rather than make it look like the other building that's next to, yeah.
Yeah. Can we see, can we see the back again?
Yep.
Yeah, they did try to make it look like the other building, but they are definitely distinctly different. Um, if you wanted to keep it that way, we could do that.
I like the idea of it being a separate look.
Yeah.
Okay.
Great.
I mean, it'd be, it'd be interesting to see too, when you, when you prep that for whatever you decide to do. I assume that would involve, you know, removing the paint first before you paint over it. If that were the case, if it matches this paint, this brick color, maybe the natural brick is. Maybe the natural brick is the right way to do that too, I don't know.
Yeah, I would love to see what that top looks like, right offhand. I haven't been up there, uh, in a bit, uh, right offhand, I can't remember what that looks like. On top or that back.
Are you talking about, right, right here used to be the Foster Healy sign. That used to, that used to say Foster Healy right across the back, so I don't think you're gonna, I mean. I don't know what's under there, but it's probably all the same from there all the way down.
Right.
One quick question I also have, Paul, uh, the the two main concerns I think that everyone has with the. With the project, the number one, of course, is the parking, and I think you will address that. And number two was the rubbish removal. And you talked about rubbish being stored in the basement. Can you, can I, can you kind of expand on that a little bit and how you would, you would take care of the rubbish from four apartments and the commercial space?
Definitely, definitely, and and Alex, um, happy to 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 chime in here. I'll start with parking and then I'll go to Alex on the trash, so. From a parking standpoint, we've called into the treasurer's office. Um, we're within a close enough walking distance to the permitted parking, um, nearby. Uh, we're gonna work with the residents to make sure they they get a permit. Obviously, there's, there's not much space here on the lot to to put in parking. We don't wanna change the. Um, historic nature of the building and those front spaces, we want to be, you know. By right, they they need to be there for commercial patrons of of Main Street, so we're gonna help the tenants get to the the permitted parking options within a few hundred. Feet walking distance nearby.
I do think that's good for your business model, but I do wanna be clear, for the purpose of this application and for the purpose of our zoning bylaw. Parking is not a consideration. It's waived for these these units on Main Street, so parking is not a planning but consideration.
Under six units.
Exactly. Under six units, parking is, it it's, it doesn't matter where it is in relation to parking.
But we're very glad.
Consideration we can have.
But we're very glad the applicant thoughtful about addressing.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah. I mean, I obviously, like I said, I think it's gonna, that's, this is a situation, part of the reason why I think it was waived in our zoning bylaw is. A, there's plenty of parking in the area, but more importantly, I think it's gonna be more important to you to have successful tenants, to have a place for them to park, so.
Right.
Re- the real world, I think, solves that problem.
So Paul's gonna address the, how do you get to the trash in the basement?
Right, and Alex, I'll defer over to you for construction.
Yeah, yeah, so, so, yeah, we, I've kicked this thing around for 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 weeks. And so in the basement, there's a, there's a big vault, so what we essentially have to do is is where you come in on the the Main Street side. Um, into the main entrance, it takes you up to the second and third, uh, floors.
Yep.
Yeah, there's a door that takes you also into the first floor. We have to create a corridor that takes you to the basement stairs. Um. Yeah, that bottom plan, that bottom plan. So when you come in on the, if you are facing the front of the building, you come in on the right side. And you walk, we have to create a corridor on the first floor that takes you to the basement stairs. It separates the retail space. It's just a small hallway, allows everybody to to access, bring all their trash downstairs. In the basement, we, there's, you know, this used to be an old bank building. And in the basement is a, is a vault, a very solid concrete vault. It is a prime place to store trash and it's right directly adjacent to the back door. The stuff can be rolled out twelve hours prior to pickup, set on a sidewalk out back where it can be picked up and then twelve hours later put back inside. So it's, it's never seen.
Okay.
I I I do, on that note, I do think although our city code does have, um, does have requirements as to. Uh, trash bins can't put, I I believe, I'm doing this off the top of my head, but it's something like they can't be put out more than twenty-four hours before pickup. And can't be left more than twenty-four hours after pickup, something to that effect. I do think that, um, that the permit conditions, uh. You know, need to, need to reflect some sort of timeframe for that, meaning the building management or tenants. Need to be very mindful that they're gonna be putting totes on a sidewalk that is theoretically supposed to be a walking sidewalk. So the two totes on the sidewalk cause somewhat of a problem there. But but as long as it's short term and they're not left there, I think maybe we can make it work. That's that, i- it's just coming to me now, but that that's the one issue I see with that.
And one of the opportunities that the DPW made, made an awesome idea, uh, in some of the comments prior to, they said, hey, you know, if you can work with Taco Tequila, there is a dumpster. In between the easement, in between your two buildings and, you know, there's plenty of space here, if you could potentially, you know, maybe redo that fence, make it more of a decorative fence and invest to help. Uh, improve that look and maybe increase the size and opportunity there, but I think we're gonna, our our plan A is really make sure that we're policing this and keeping it in the basement. Twelve hours before and after, so.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, so, so yes, sir, yes, sir, Paul, you're, you're absolutely correct. Your, um, refuse regulation says that. That you can't put it out, uh, sooner than twelve hours prior to the day of pickup and then it must be recovered twelve hours after.
Okay. And 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 you do have, it does look like, and and I, s- someone had mentioned, I think Paula mentioned this to me the other day about this little strip right here. Um, so you do have a little bit of room. I don't know how wide that is. I assume it's no more than a couple feet. But if you can, as best you can, keep them off the sidewalk, uh, or as far back off the sidewalk, especially if. You know, there's someone in a wheelchair or whatever else trying to get through there, that becomes problematic.
Yes, sir. So that's, that's about three feet right there. Uh, last, last time I was there, we looked at it and. And you know, we have to tie in and put a sprinkler system into this and it's gonna come into the basement, basically right there where that white. Door is sitting that wood, that's an old storage room.
If, Paul, is this, is it, is it possible and and. I I I don't know, again, I don't know how wide it is. I don't even know if if this is, if this is allowable, but if you're digging into there anyway for. A new water sewer line or whatever the case would be, is it possible just to, just to patch this with concrete to match our sidewalk here? So that you widen enough where if you have your carts there, someone can get by?
It's a great idea, yeah. Alex, that was one of the things you brought up as an option too, is potentially.
Absolutely, we, if, uh, as long as we can get the approval to do so, we're happy to pour that back as a solid sidewalk and match what you have currently. Cause we're gonna have to patch back what we, we cut out to put in the sprinkler system and the, uh, sewer sewer drain. It, uh, is currently tied into the storm or stormwater into the sewer.
I think that would be awesome.
Okay.
Yeah, we will definitely take care of that.
Got it.
Last little bit of green space.
Maybe we could put decorative, you know, planters, uh, you know, nice, nice, kinda green, green planters there, um, you know, work on the green space.
And is it just, that's just a basement entrance in the back, the, the, the other door to the right?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, we will be cleaning all of that up and and some of that, that old, uh, rotted out rod iron will be removed and replaced with something significantly nicer.
Yeah, you could do something with that, with like you mentioned, some potted something along the sides of the doorway and make it a little more even attractive, even though it's not like the main entrance. People, the bikes and other things like that, but it just would look nice.
I agree.
Than a basement door.
Rather than, that's just a big metal basement door, that's all it is.
Absolutely. Yep.
If the board members have any comments, question?
No, I mean, aside from that, I think we're, I'm ecstatic that these units are getting developed and.
Yeah.
Think, you know, the intent, if those of you that were on, I think most of the board members were on the board. When we, when we were drafting all the zoning changes over the last two years, and one of our board's additional recommendations. Was to allow these kind of uses by right. It ended up getting modified by the council so that they have to come to us tonight. But generally speaking, I think these uses, um, I I, whatever we can do to expedite them and make them happen, I'm all for it.
And I'm, I mean, I am, um, glad you decided to retain the first floor's commercial space.
A- absolutely. I think that, you know, uh, one of our main goals is to make sure that, uh, in in enabling this project, we'll actually be able to lower the rents. Um, to try to, to try and bring in the right type of tenant that that the city would wanna see on the corner there. It's a. Right at the entrance to Main Street, so hopefully we can get somebody, a great commercial tenant in that space.
Appreciate that.
I've, I thi- I think the apartment layouts, Paul, look very, very nice. And, uh, I'm very, very pleased to see four more residential units being above storefronts on Main Street. I think that's a great idea. Happy to see him there, and I think you've worked out the kinks here pretty well.
Yeah, thank you very much, Peter. Yeah, thank you. And and for commercial space too, we're happy to work as we get, you know, new leads that come in with our leasing manager. We're gonna try to right-size and. Uh, make sure we can get, you know, the right type of space down there too for for that tenant.
Sounds good.
There are any department comments? Does Nick have any comment?
Um, thank you, Paula. I had spoken with Paul a little bit prior to this meeting, um, so I I had two comments. One was about the, the, well, a few comments. Um, one was about the roof drains being tied into the San Terry Sewer. Um, they're planning to address that and separate that out. Um, one was related to parking, which we've already touched on a little bit, and one was related to track, which we've also, uh, touched on, so. Um, I think I'm good as long as the applicant is aware of the the permitting requirements for. Excavation in the street for installation of any, um, sprinkler or drainage lines. Um, and then, um, just making sure to coordinate with DPW engineering. Um, during, during the actual construction, they like to come out and do inspections and whatnot. Um, beyond that, uh, two other things, one is that Mastio T is planning to. Rebuild the Water Street Bridges, um, one over the railroad, um, railroad tracks in Boulder Drive and one over the Nashua River. Um, I I believe that project is slated to start in twenty twenty-five, but, um, obviously, that's right next to this project, this, this property, so. Um, will have some traffic impacts for future residents. Um, and then the second thing I wanted to mention is that the city of Pittsburgh. Is undertaking an effort to, um, renew their, their water and sewer infrastructure underneath the roadway on Main Street and Boulder Drive. Um, so Boulder Drive Water Mains will come first, um, followed by some combined sewer separation work on the wastewater side. Um, and ultimately, water mains on Main Street, so this area will see some construction for the foreseeable future. And our plan is to to pave both Boulder Drive and Main Street, um, once all the utilities are complete, so. Um, there's, there's some light at the end of the tunnel, but it's gonna take a few years before we get there.
Nick, sincerely appreciate just the the advance that you gave us on the comments and we're really excited to work with DPW to get this project done, so thank you very much.
You're very welcome and feel free to reach out with any other questions, um, as you go through the process.
Nick, while, while you're on the line, I have one quick thing about that, uh, and that I only ask because so that the applicant can know. Do you know if they're anticipating road closures for that work?
Um, yes, we will need to do road closures for each, each of those projects that I mentioned. Um, because we converted traffic to two-way on Main Street and Boulder Drive, it allows us to reroute traffic around different work zones fairly easily. Um, but we're, we'll, we'll be issuing advanced notice for any, any, um, road closures and and whatnot. Um, we do weekly alerts to the Sentinel, um, and we try to be as specific as possible to let people know which streets will be closing and whatnot. Um, and when we were going through the the main boulder, two-way project, um, one thing that we did is we worked very closely with community development. They helped us post out a weekly, um, Facebook update to let people know exactly where the work was taking place and which streets would be closed. Um, it wasn't completely flaw- flawless, um, you know, the contractor's schedule changes kind of with weather and whatnot, but, um. We, we did a pretty good job, I think, of getting the message out there. We're gonna take a similar approach, um, for future projects on Main Street and Boulder Drive.
And one more question, cause it pertains to this site particularly, and it's important to me, is, um, the three, the three spaces in front of this building. I was told they're relocating further down Main Street because that's the source of the bottleneck from Blossom and from. Going over that bridge, um, i- is that happening and when is that happening?
It is happening. Um, we didn't, we weren't able to do it towards the end of this past construction season. It got too cold. To to actually put paint down on the ground. Um, so as soon as it warms up, uh, late April, early May, our plan is to get out there and and make those changes. So the three parking spaces that are there are, they'll slide down towards Cushing Street a little bit. Um, and that, the goal there is to to change the lane configurations on the Main Street eastbound approach. As you get up to the, the, um, Day Street Water Street intersection to allow for, um, straight through traffic. Or left turn traffic with the left-hand lane, um, and then widen that right-hand lane to allow, uh, right turns over the Water Street Bridge. So in order to accomplish that, we need to slide the parking spaces, uh, west a little bit. To allow that, that second lane to get on the the right-hand side of the eastbound approach.
Perfect, and you're keeping one of those handicap spaces, right?
Correct.
Good, excellent, thanks, Nick.
Yep, thank you.
And, uh, Councilman Hasing, as his hand raised, Paula.
Okay, counselor?
Uh, thank you, uh, Madam Chair. Uh, yeah, I wanted to speak strongly in favor of this project. This is exactly the kind of redevelopment project we wanna. Want to encourage on Main Street, um, that the city is trying to encourage. Uh, we have an existing vacant building, uh, the upstairs have been, you know, not unused for, for decades. Um, um, and we've had crush tents coming to go from the, the first floor, none of them have stuck around. Um, so we really wanna see some life in this building, and with the zoning rewrite, that was really the goal to make these kinds of projects by right. And we took a second try last summer to try to address whatever, uh, making these secret approval and something. Um, I would correct, um, Mr. Fontaine, that the council didn't, uh, want to preserve. Uh, planning board approval for this, it was just something that was, that, um, the zoning enforcement officer, officer picked up on that would require. Planning board approval, and the intention was for this type of project just to be by right. Um, that it's not, it's an existing building, um, we didn't feel that it's the best use of the, uh, planning board's time to. To debate evidence, less than six, uh, or six of us. Just the infrastructure, just taking an old tired building and breathing new life into it, to downtown.
Yes, yeah.
And just, uh, in the future, I, I'll be going back, I've already talked to. Um, Ms. Murphy, and also, since the president's around, we're gonna go take a look at zoning artists again. See what specifically we have to change again to make these types of projects, uh, by right, cause that's really the intent of what we wanna encourage downtown.
Appreciate it, I think the, the key is exist, existing buildings.
Yes.
Really, rather than save by right for something new, but the existing building should be a number.
And I will say, I have had a lot of conversations with Mr. Fashi, owns a number of properties in this area of Main Street. Um, and he has a great vision, and he's been a very responsive property owner, and, um, he's been a partner with the city. Uh, he's looking to do good things, and, you know, I do support this project, I look forward to seeing the next project, so he's gonna come forward with.
Thank you, Council of Enas.
All right, thank you very much.
Mary Jo, uh, has her hand raised too, Paul.
Okay, Mary Jo.
Are you able to hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, excellent, I just very briefly wanted to echo, um, the positive comments of Council of Enas. This is precisely the type of mixed-use repurposing. Um, it's actually transit-oriented, we often don't say that outright, but it certainly is. One of the closest buildings to the intermodal, and at a time when the Commonwealth is so focused on the MBTA zoning. Or zoning, uh, to facilitate housing in MBTA communities, we are one. This is a really great example of seeing that happen, also, it's easy for folks to focus on, I'll call it the bigger. Um, housing developments that go on in our downtown, and yet we've had a number of extremely successful. Three, four, five, six units in the upper stories, and as soon as they get completed. Uh, quite quickly, they're tenanted, so, so there is a desire for quality multifamily in the downtown. And sometimes it comes in the form of these smaller buildings, so I think this is fantastic, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Anybody else in, um, in the audience?
No more hands raised.
Um, any, but any board member?
I'll shout you.
Okay, all right, so does the board have enough information to make a decision to?
Yep, make a motion with the public hearing.
All right, motion's been made to close the hearing, is there? And a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, all those opposed, okay, discussion.
I'll make a motion to approve the special permit and site plan for Tosi two ninety-eight Main Street. Uh, conversion of four residential units on the second and third floor, um, subject to just the conditions we had talked about, um, that. Um, trash, in, in, unless it's determined otherwise, uh, Paul, and you'll have to come back to us, but trash to be, to be presented, to be. Uh, kept in the basement, put out for, put out, uh, for trash collection no more than twelve hours before. The day of collection and twelve hours after, um, repair the rear and front facade. Um, whether that's sandblasting or painting, um, the staining, the woodwork, whatever you decide that, 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 that makes that look better. Um, repairing the front fire, the rear fire escape. Um, and then just the, 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 the work, the work you volunteered, matching the sidewalk in the rear. Um, to expand it to the building so that the trash barrels don't block the sidewalk, um, aside from that, I'm good with everything else. That motion, just to clarify, that motion would inherently have in it, uh, waiving the fifty-foot setback and the density requirement.
And any, any, on the conditions, everybody else set that bar, okay?
If, if, if you determine, Paul, and this is just an aside, you don't have to answer this, cause we're closing the public hearing, but. If in the future, you work with the abutting property owner to, to, you know, beautify that fence and use it for both of yours. Awesome, just come back and, you know, say I'm planning on doing that, I don't think that'll be a problem at all.
If it's, if the trash is, um, exterior, then just. Right, use decorative fencing and come back with the site plan of just a modified minor, this cited.
Absolutely, definitely, thank you, absolutely.
Plan for that. Anything else I can think of? Uh, Wednesday, I, I guess the expectation for the construction to be completed.
Well, I, I, I'd get in trouble if I spoke for Alex on this one, so I'll pass it, pass it to the right, Alex, I don't know if you.
Yes, so, well, the sooner the better for us, I'm, I'm gonna start reaching out to people tomorrow. They know that we're, we're, we're ready to get started, so. Um, I think at this point, we need to pull a demo permit and get our building permit, and our plumber's gonna start pulling plumbing permits. Yeah, like, as soon as possible.
So within the next, within the next two years, easily.
Yeah, so when, when, when Nick was talking about tearing up the, the roadway, we're, we're gonna be done before twenty-five without, without question.
Okay.
So, so my suggestion, Paula, the reason why Paul is asking this is a starting and end date, I would say, full permit in twelve months, finishing twenty-four. And, and that should give you plenty of time, and if it doesn't, just come back for an extension.
Absolutely, thank you very much, that's. We should be able to handle that.
Perfect.
All right, so as part of the condition, um. Without, is there a se, is there a second? And second, all right, I'm gonna take roll call vote, all those in favor say aye, all those opposed say oppose, Lynn. Aye. Alex? Oh, it's, sorry, Alex's request, sorry, sorry, I'm just going through my list, yes.
Aye.
Peter.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
Paula, aye.
Amanda, aye.
You know, I got thrown with the Alex piece, and I skipped right over your name, I'm sorry. It's been a long night, and it's only nine o'clock.
Thank you very much, Paul.
We can't thank you all enough, really, really appreciate the opportunity, and really excited to, to, to grow a relationship and, and restore this, this awesome building, so thank, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
We are in a transition phase, we've got a new principal planner beginning this week. As well, so, and we, I want to give a shout out to the, uh, Community Development Office in Herlin for. And Liz for undertaking, uh, a lot of what went into tonight's meeting. Um, cause again, we're, we're in a interim stage at this transition stage at this time, so.
I, I do want the board to know, and I know Paula just inferred this, and I, I, I think we need to say it aloud, Herlinda's done a fantastic job. In, in the short time she had to take over from Mike, she had a, a, a very difficult transition in taking over, and, and she's done. A wonderful job with, you know, giving us the information we need and collecting department reviews, and, you know, having everything ready, so. I, I, I just want, I, you know, I want Herlinda to know, and Liz to know that we're, Paul and I are very appreciative.
Me too, thanks, Herlinda.
Thank you, guys.
You're very welcome.
I'd echo that, Herlinda has done an amazing job in the office.
Yes, we are moving into some great territory. Too. Uh, we have other business, which I don't think we have any, and we don't have anything marked under communications. Unless Liz, do you have anything you'd like to announce to the board, I mean, we do have the principal planner beginning.
Chantel Flex starts tomorrow, um, so she'll, uh, you know, maybe, maybe need a couple of days to. Get up to speed before she's ready to really jump in with you guys, but. I'm sure it won't take that long, she has many years of experience in other communities and at MRPC.
Great.
I, um, I, I, the one thing that we, we, I know you still don't wanna talk about, cause you wanna wait for Chantel, and that's fine, we do. Soon need to talk about the twenty twenty-three December meeting date. And the scheduling and alternative day every month for auxiliary meetings if they're necessary.
Yeah, so I'll mention to the board, uh, that, uh, aside from our. Fourth Tuesday of the month, that we could potentially hold aside another day during the month where we could do a virtual. Um, for things that fall on the plate that have to be done on some either shorter notice or carryover. You know, you know, in some cases, not to say we're doing, going to have to do two meetings a month. But we wanna be able to reserve, because we always have a somewhat harder time in order to try to coordinate some people's availability, so if we kinda can schedule something. Potentially to be, kinda be a little holding spot.
I think the expectation is, once or twice a year, maybe, you guys know, we ran into it in November and December. Where, and now where we're, we're getting rid of this backlog of stuff that we have. It's, it's almost impossible to schedule a meeting date for, you know, a week out, so if we know that there's. A best possible date that works for a meeting for everyone else, and we hold that as. Hey, just in case we need one, we realize we might not have all seven members, but if we can get five of seven or six of seven, then. Then, you know, that's the intent, so I just wanna talk about that, probably in, uh, our, end of our March meeting or our April meeting.
And then, as Paul mentioned, we'll try to also, uh, uh, coordinate a better date, rather than right at Christmas. Um, for the December meeting.
Yeah, this year, this year, it would be the day after Christmas, so.
Yeah, we don't wanna be looking at plans that's Christmas Day.
And, and as we realized this past year, and unfortunately, the meeting got, got canceled, but the biggest issue wasn't exactly the meeting date, it was getting. All the stuff together from applicants and from departments and everything else, the week leading up to Christmas, I realized very little happens, so. Let's, we're just gonna, I think we're gonna move that to an entirely different, um, day altogether in December. From this, for this year and all future years.
Yep, until any other, we have changes to be made, so, um, and then efforts are also being, uh, made towards. Um, streamlining a bit and recording of, um, decisions, so this process is being worked on. In that, so, so that we don't run into, has this been recorded so that we can act on? More, um, I would say more quickly on, um, applications when they come forward to ensure that they're already. Been recorded and effective, when someone's coming in for an extension or modification, and if it hasn't been recorded, it's not effective yet. So we're gonna try to minimize that bounce back. Peace with that.
I did have one communication that Mike always makes, and because he's not here, I will, some of you might have saw that our. Retired principal planner has come back for a few days, um, he had sent an email on Friday about the CPTC. Uh, registration, the, there's a, a conference at Holy Cross in Worcester, they're gonna cover a lot of different topics about. Planning and zoning, and, um, I had done one ten or so years ago, and it was pretty good. I told Mike, I'm most likely gonna do this one, he informed me that there are a couple board members that are already gonna do it, so.
Yeah, I registered to go, yeah.
Yeah, so if anyone else is interested, they'll be, you won't be the only one there, there might be as many as three of us there.
I'll be there.
Trying to clear it with my wife, though.
This really good food.
Excellent.
At the conference, but yes, very informative, a lot of good topics, so when you do, just have to, uh, write, write. Uh, respond back to the Community Development Office, look through the guide and pick which classes, they sign you up for the classes, and they'll take care of the registration. Any other communications, or Liz have anything else? Okay, all right, and we don't have any minutes as of yet, um, but those will be, we'll look at that for next month, we have some from last, um. Well, from January, and then it'll be the set, and anything from last, from whatever we have to do for last year, so we can get caught up.
And, and just, Liz, just an aside, since you're on right now, and we have a moment, uh, when. Chantel does get settled, or if you just wanna mention it to her when you run into her, um, I know Paul and I are still interested in meeting with her at some point in the next. Two or three or four weeks, so, you know, however that works out, um. I, 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 I know she's got a lot of stuff to do, so whenever she's comfortable enough to take up the stuff that we wanna go through, that'd be great.
Understood, understood, and, and I think, uh, there was some discussion about, um, uh, setting up another meeting for fees. Uh, looking at the fees, and I think that, uh, we'd have her, um, sit in on that meeting with me if I'm available to go to. I think, I think that's still up in the air, what day and time.
I have yet to hear back from, um, counselor, from Counselor Zarella and Attorney Tree. Um, I, I, as far as I know, it might be Friday afternoon, but. I haven't heard back, so I, I don't know, it was supposed to be Friday morning, and they, he can't do that anymore, so. Um, I, I don't know yet, I'll, I'll let you know as soon as I do, and hopefully it's tomorrow, and if not, it will probably be. Next week, some, at some point.
Sure.
Well, appreciate everyone's time, and I was, um, I thought it was pretty awesome that on the, uh. On the agenda, there was actually a link to the documents, which is great, and I think it was, um, mentioned that I think that link will stay. So that you can hopefully go back to that link and see the documents, and it'll grow in that folder as we progress with other months too. So they'll be accessible to the public as well.
Right.
Great for the hearing process.
It's awesome that we're gonna be able to go back and pick up stuff that we.
Yeah.
Had before, I think that's, that's a, that's a big step.
So really appreciate the, the, the efforts the, the Community Development Department's been making.
I'm gonna create a sub-tab on the planning board page. That's gonna say meeting materials, that way, if people are searching it on the webs, on the city site, it'll be easily accessible.
Oh, great.
Fantastic.
Yeah, move forward, all right, and. It is not ten o'clock, but.
I, I, I'm impressed, make a motion to adjourn.
In a second, all those in favor, say aye. All those opposed. Great.